I would like to call to order this meeting of the Bloomington Common Council for Wednesday, February 28th, 2024. Clerk Bolden, will you please call the roll?
Do we have Councilmember Flaherty yet? No. Councilmember Zulik?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Ruff? Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Stasburg?
Here.
Assari?
Here.
And Rosenbarger?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will start with land and labor acknowledgement. We recognize that the city of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people. And we acknowledge they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana, including in Bloomington, resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many indigenous and other people of color, and we commit to the work necessary to create a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity. I'd like to summarize our agenda for this evening. We will have approval of three sets of minutes from September of 2023. Then we will move on to reports, first reports from council members. Secondly, reports from the mayor and city offices. And in this category this evening, we have a report from the deputy mayor about city preparations for the solar eclipse on April 8th. We then have reports from council committees, if there are any. And then we have what's called reports from the public, which means an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items that are not on the agenda. Then we will move to appointments to boards and commissions. And then we will have legislation. And tonight we have Resolution 2024-02 to amend Resolution 2023-22, which approved an inter-local cooperation agreement between the city of Bloomington and Monroe County, Indiana, for the operation of the Bloomington-Monroe County Capital Improvement Board and the Convention and Visitors Commission. Then we have Resolution 2024-03, a resolution urging passage of the United States Senate Bill 2990 regarding the expansion of the Charles C. Deem Wilderness and the establishment of the Benjamin Harrison National Recreation Area. We have no legislation for first readings. Then we will move to a second period of public comment on items that are not on the agenda. Then we will address matters of council schedule before we adjourn. As you may have noticed, I did not mention anything about a resolution regarding a ceasefire in Gaza because that is not on our agenda this evening. If you're here to speak on that topic, you will have an opportunity to do so during reports from the public, and there'll be a second opportunity at the end of our meeting. So when we get to that part of the meeting, I will ask for a show of hands to see how many people would like to speak, and then we'll try to decide how much time each person can be allocated. So we're ready to approve minutes.
I move that the council suspend the rules and consider the minutes listed for approval this evening in the ordinary course of business.
Say.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules, and this is necessary because the minutes are from the previous city council term, not from this sitting city council. And we do need to do all of our votes by roll call this evening because we have one council member, Councilmember Flaherty, has joined us via Zoom. So Clerk Bolden, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
And Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Thank you.
I move that the minutes from September 6th, 2023, September 13th, 2023, and September 20th, 2023 be approved.
Say.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that those three sets of minutes be approved. Are there any comments? Councilmember Stasburg?
Yeah, Clerk Bolden, I meant to email this to you, and I didn't, but in the set of minutes from September 6th... Oh, sorry. The set of minutes from September 6th, I think maybe there's a typo in there under "Flaherty presented Resolution 23-16, which but expressed support." And I'm guessing that maybe we need to remove the "but." I'm not sure what needs to happen there.
Would you like to pull the minutes so that I can double-check them for what it should actually be, and we can resubmit them next week? Or would you like me to make the correction on the fly? Either way works.
I'm fine with you making a correction right now based on removing the "but." I think that if we just remove the "but," "which expressed support" for increasing the salary, I think that would be fine. So, thanks.
Very good. Any other comments on these minutes? Okay, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on approval of these minutes with that small correction for September 6th?
Absolutely. Councilmember Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those minutes are approved. We will next move on to reports from council members. And let me start with Councilmember Flaherty. Do you have a report this evening?
No report this evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Zulik, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, I just wanted to remind everyone, councilmembers and public alike, that on Saturday at 10:00 a.m. in the McCloskey Conference Room, Councilmember Flaherty and I will be co-hosting a town hall to discuss how we can better support our unhoused population. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo? Councilmember Ruff?
No report tonight. Thank you.
Okay, and on my other side, Councilmember Rosenbarger?
I just have a report that the Safe Streets for All Safety Week is going to be moved to the first week of April, and the city will have more information on that as it gets closer. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Assari?
No report.
Councilmember Stasburg?
No report. Thank you.
Okay, and I would like to give a brief report on film showing discussion that was held this past weekend by the CAPS Commission, the Community Advisory on Public Safety Commission. And I'll ask Mr. Lucas to display a slide, so we have it visually as well as orally here. So it was a very interesting film showing. The film was called Reimagining Safety. The filmmaker Michael Solomon was present, and there were some other experts who participated in a panel discussion the following day. If you missed it, you can view it via Amazon Prime. It costs $5 to rent, and I highly recommend it. It really is an excellent interrogation of our current system of policing and incarceration and the ways in which that system is broken. It examines the systemic racism, the fact that it favors people who have money, the fact that our system is focused on punishment rather than restoration or rehabilitation, and that we are focused on blaming inevitable end results of broken systems on individuals rather than investing our money to change those systems. The discussion was very interesting as well. Professor Jody Armour was participating from the University of Southern California, and he made the point that it's not a choice of having police and having nothing. There are other solutions that have been shown to work to actually make people more safe. And as he described it, what we need to consider doing is unbundle tasks that currently police have to deal with because they're the ones that deal with drug misuse interventions. They're the ones who deal with mental health emergencies. They're the ones who deal with camping of unhoused community members, and they are not the best qualified to deal with those problems. There are other ways, more effective ways, that we can help people in those situations. So I invite you to view the film, and there's a discussion group that'll be ongoing called the Bloomington Community Safety Roundtable. And there's a URL you can go to in order to sign up for that. Or you can reach out to me, and I can let you know how to do that, so that we can continue these discussions and see how to make changes on a local level to make everybody in the community more safe.
All right. We will then move on to reports from the mayor and city offices, and I believe we have Deputy Mayor Gretchen Knapp to tell us about the eclipse planning.
Hi, good evening, everyone. First, I have to say Mike McAfee is in the audience, and he has been working on the eclipse planning for a very long time, so I'm giving a report based on his work. There he is. So as we all know, Bloomington lies in the path of totality to view the total solar eclipse on April 8th. It will begin to, the eclipse will begin to enter the state around 1:47 p.m., and the totality, which will last about four minutes and two seconds, will start at 3:02, and everything will be over by 3:12. So this is, Mike and his team anticipate that this could be the largest tourism event in Indiana history, and the estimates for the number of visitors we would have here in Bloomington range from sold-out game day, 50,000, 60,000 people, up to 250,000 extra people. So as you can imagine, this will be a big influx of people for a few days. The Monroe Solar Eclipse Coordination Committee was convened in 2023. Mike and Kirk White have been heading that up. Visit Bloomington, Indiana University, City of Bloomington, many, many community organizations are involved in that planning. There are many subcommittees, and they're all working together to ensure that we have a safe experience and we can enjoy the eclipse and prepare ourselves and educate people on what to expect. So one of, some of the things that we know so far is that naturally, traffic will be an issue. And some of the solutions to that might include creating a major traffic event in Waze and Google Maps. State police will be on the highways, so they will not be doing the usual game day coordination that they would do for IU. So IUPD is soliciting volunteers and training them to assist with that. Some of the other things that we might expect would be slow internet, internet and cell service, card reader problems, long delays in travel. So it's a great day to stay home and walk or bike to the location of viewing of your choice if you are a resident. City facilities, including City Hall, will be closed to the public on that day. Parks will be open, but City Hall will be closed. We don't want employees to be part of that traffic clog and experiencing those delays. And if they get here, we don't know that they will be able to do their work if there is no internet or cell service. So they will be, a letter is going out to employees this Friday that will provide some options for them and outline what they can do. Next week, March 6th, there will be a joint press conference to share information on public safety and how to prepare. Media advisory of that has already gone out, and we'll send out a press release after the press conference, and this includes Office of the Mayor Communications, IU Media Relations, MCCSC Communications, the county, police, and fire will be there. If you are looking for information, the Visit Bloomington Eclipse website is your one-stop shopping for almost all information. We are expecting that major networks like NBC, CBS will be here broadcasting, and the convention center is likely to serve as the hub for where they are. A few things to note, many restaurants are already closed on Mondays, and you might think with all these people coming in, boy, eclipse day would be great for them, but their employees will have the same issues of getting there, so that may not be the case. And for that reason, the convention center will be opened up with food and beverage to supplement those activities. Let's see. At the city, many departments such as Public Works and Parks, Police, BPD, will not be, there will be no PTO for employees that day because there will be so much work to do around the city, making sure that bathrooms are opened and restocked, that running activities that the Parks Program is doing, providing parking and traffic management services. Let's see here. BPD will have a modified staffing schedule, so it'll be all hands on deck. There will be about 50 other officers working that day, and they are coordinating with all of the other public safety agencies. Fire will be staffing with additional personnel. All the fire stations will be open, and they're working on a communication plan and finding ways to be able to navigate if the traffic is bad. All the stations will be available as reunification locations if necessary. Community and Family Resources will activate all of their after-hours ambassadors and the program manager to be downtown, providing hospitality, outreach, and resources. Let's see, all kinds of events at Parks and Rec, which you can see on the Visit Bloomington site. There is a lot of information, and I did provide a memo that will be part of the, Stephen, correct me if I'm wrong, packet afterwards. And I'm happy to answer questions that I can or to reach out to Adam from Public Works, who kindly joined me, or Mike might know the answers, so please feel free to ask away.
Thank you, Ms. Knapp. We appreciate the report. Are there questions for Ms. Knapp about the April 8th preparations? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Hi, actually, no questions. Thank you for your report. I just wanted to say I am wildly excited about this. I don't know, I'm pretty sure now we're like on the moon cycle, that is the eclipse cycle, and I was like waiting for that to happen, and it's just, this is huge. Thanks.
It's going to be very cool. And huge thanks again to Visit Bloomington, who's been really doing some heavy lifting on communicating this information to all of the out-of-town people who will be coming.
I have a couple of questions. So it was reported in the Herald Times, I think today, that the event at the Monroe County Fairgrounds has been canceled? Is that right, or it's just part of it?
It has been canceled, but my understanding is it will still be open for camping and other activities, but the formal event, Shadow Fest, was canceled.
Okay, but there may still be people that camp.
Yes, and there definitely, and if anyone is curious, I heard Tuesday's meeting that only four of the 20-some hotels in town are sold out. So if you have people wanting to stay in your house and you would like them to stay in hotel, there is still room for them.
That is very surprising. Yes, Councilmember Assari?
Thank you so much, Deputy Mayor. In terms of sort of, if we were to have 250,000 people here, what efforts are we doing to focus where they go? Because I think there's a, you know, there's certain areas of town that seem better prepared to receive large numbers of people. And, you know, reports were saying that the perfect point of totality is like Jiffy Treat parking lot or something like that, right? So, you know, how do we, how are we helping to shepherd people?
Is there to say that with the totality being across the whole county and 250,000 people, our ability to shepherd them to a few select locations is probably zero?
Right.
So I think that the eclipse website that is promoting eclipse locations is the best chance we have for folks coming from out of town because we won't really be able to close down roads or funnel traffic to certain locations. So I think it'll be very difficult to control that. One thing I did want to mention, some people have asked about going up to the top of parking garages to view the eclipse, and that will not be allowed for safety reasons on either city garages or IU's garages. All the public safety folks have determined that that will not be a location. So, you know, I don't have more detail. As we get closer to the date, this team meets, I think, twice a week. Some of the subcommittees are meeting three times a week. There may be more information about that. And if anyone else, Adam doesn't know more, Mike do you know more? The camping grounds still have spots open. They are not booked up, but they are open.
This is, the structure of this meeting is so that there are questions just from us up here right now, and then we'll get to the public comment a little bit later. Well, that's a good point. I had a question about the after-hours ambassadors because those are two new positions. Will they both be filled by then, do we expect?
Has been filled. The other one was not filled, so that search will be restarting. I don't know if that person, I think that by that date, the new person who was just hired will be working. So that's the after-hours ambassador, and then the program manager will both be there. It's a ways away, so if we get really lucky, maybe we can fill that second slot by then. Let's hope so.
Great. And then my last question was about food trucks. Has there been any arrangements made so that our local businesses that have food trucks will have a place to set up on April 8th?
That is a great question. You do? Good.
I wanted to make it worth your while, Mr. Wayson.
What I can say about the food trucks is there are ample opportunities, and I think there are, we're actually importing food trucks at this point in time. So most, all the local food trucks have locations that they have coordinated their presence at. So IU around the stadium, I think, is asking for at least five to eight food trucks, 20 food trucks, Mike just said. So there is no lack of opportunity for the food, local food trucks and food vendors to have good food sales that day. So lots of coordination there, and I do know of some others that are trying to get their health department licensing in advance of the event from out-of-town food trucks, too. So lots of food sold that day.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Knapp or Mr. Wayson? Okay, seeing none. Thank, oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Assari?
We had a, maybe a dry run of what it might look like to not have cell phone service, like in a mass scale this last week. And so are we implementing any arrangements for public safety or any other thing to make sure that if communications are down, et cetera, that, you know, that they're...
So a couple things. So first and foremost with cell service, public safety and other central public servants are going to be on the FirstNet system, which is a prioritized cell phone service. The other thing that's occurring that day is the Monroe County Emergency Management Agency, in coordination with all their local partners, are going to be standing up what they call a Joint Information Center and an Emergency Operations Center. So, or, an Emergency Operations Center with the Joint Information Center coexisting with it. And that'll bring the key public safety folks to a central location to operate out of that day, similar to if we had a major weather event like a tornado or something, things like that. So they are planning all of that for the day.
I actually have one thing to add to that. ITS is also looking into requesting AT&amp;T COWs, which is Cells on Wheels, for downtown to assist particularly with making sure that FirstNet, the public safety comp stays up.
Yes, please go ahead.
The, just my, and this will be my last question, I promise. When, are we, have we thought about using, for example, the emergency alert system, for example, to, in the absence of reliable methods where everybody is getting information? I've still been in Ubers just this afternoon, for example, where people are unaware that there is an eclipse happening. And so, you know, I mean, and so the compound effects of having a local populace who maybe is somewhat unaware, it seems strange that people would still be in the state. But it's sort of in our information semi-desert that we live in. Like, are we thinking about ways to make sure that everybody gets the information that this is happening, you know, this is how, what to do, this is how to prepare?
There are many, many organizations who are trying to put out communications. Do I know that every citizen will find out? I'm not entirely sure. But, but there is a lot of effort being paid, and there's, the Joint Information Committee is spending a lot of time on making sure that, that the emergency communications can still happen, and some of that is not open to the public for security purposes, to make sure that whatever channels they choose really do remain open. But in terms of just informing the general public about what's happening, what the events are, I think as we get closer, we'll see more, of course, marketing by the Parks Department of the events they're having and all of the other places that are also promoting their own events. I'm sure, you know, the Office of the Mayor has press releases scheduled and videos that the mayor will be doing, sharing her excitement about the eclipse. I don't know if I can give you a more precise answer than that.
Just addition to that, both Indiana University and Monroe County Emergency Management are putting out information to sign up for text alerts. So I can't think of what's called Spenbridge. We have a county and city system, EverBridge, that we can do emergency notification through. And then IU, what they're doing is kind of opening up like a game day where you can opt in for text messaging that day, and they're promoting that, and I think that's on the Visit Bloomington website as well. So anyone that wants to sign up for those services can do so there. But both county-city, both the city and county system and the IU system will be activated that day to pump out information as needed. Yep.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council members? All right, seeing none. We thank you very much for that update, and we're excited to see the event take shape and be there. Next, we will move to reports from council committees. Do we have any this evening? I don't think so. All right. So we will move to the first section of public open comment from members of the public. If you would like to make a comment this evening, could you please raise your hand? So I see 19 here. Mr. Lucas, do we have any hands raised online? And could you please make the announcement about how people can raise their hand online?
Yes, if there are members of the public that wish to speak that are attending via Zoom, please use the raise hand feature to let us know. You can find that in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab. If you can't locate that feature, please send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak. And I'm not seeing any hands up at the moment.
All right, well, if we have 20 people and we have 20 minutes for this part of the agenda, I think that's not enough time for each person. So if we allow two minutes per person, we would have to expand this part of our meeting until about 7:40, and I would go ahead and do that if there are no objections from other council members. Any objections? Okay, so let's try to finish this portion of the meeting by 7:40. So if you'd like to speak, you can go ahead and start lining up. And there's also a sign-up sheet at the podium that maybe we might be able to move it to the side so you can sign up before you speak. And there will be a timer that goes on the screen that is set for two minutes for each person, so that everybody will have an opportunity.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm Charlotte Sutcliffe, and I've lived in this town since 1964. In 1971, I was elected to the city council, and in 198, on January 4th, 1974, 1972, the city council, which was a complete change in the leadership in this community, we, there were, it had been eight Democrats, eight Republicans and one Democrat, and we flipped it to eight Democrats and one, one Republican, and changed the mayor and the city council, city clerk, and so forth. Okay, that's just preliminary. So we, on January 4th, 1972, we convened the city council in this new forum for the first time, and one of the items on the agenda somehow was a, was a resolution to urge the United States to stop the war in Vietnam. Now, that was ridiculous. I realized it was audacious. Everybody thought, oh, yeah, there they go, they're gonna, they're gonna do nothing but, but do things like this silly. But that was, we were quite serious because we realized that, that the entire country really wanted to stop the war and that the powers that were in Washington at the time govern- really wanted to stop the war and that the powers that were in Washington at the time, President Johnson and so forth, had to be told that. They had to learn that, what the public thought. And we had, even though we realized that it was apparently foolish for the city to say, "Stop the war," it was also very, very important because that's a means of communicating with our government. And we are in a situation right now, we're in a situation right now, which is pretty awful, in my opinion, and many others. I think we all have to be sorry that there are human beings being killed.
You're at the end of your time, so if you could just finish up?
Pardon me? No, I can't. I want to say that, that I am a minister's daughter. I have, I believe in human life and human beings. And we have a dilemma. We have two, two sides to a very complicated problem. I want the City Council in Bloomington, please, to consider how serious this is in, in human terms.
I'm very sorry, but we're trying to keep everybody to two minutes because there's so many speakers.
Okay. I just, I hope that you will accept the, the, the challenge to form or, or pass a resolution in favor of ceasefire now. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. And go ahead and state your name for the record as well, and you'll have up to two minutes.
I'm a student at IU, but I come forth today to urge you all to endorse a ceasefire resolution. I urge you all to endorse a ceasefire resolution. The past four and a half months, we've witnessed a genocidal onslaught against the Palestinian people in Gaza that has amounted to nearly 40,000 people murdered in cold blood, that including 14,000 children. That meaning that, you know, if you were a Gazan, your child, not only them, but their friends, their classmates, their entire school and scores of schools being murdered in cold blood. And we've seen that this is not an aberration of the treatment of Palestinians from the past 75 years, but this is the pinnacle of 75 years of occupation apartheid and colonialism. And so I stand forth, also because of the explicit part that the American, that the United States plays in this. And because of that, because of the United States aiding and abetting, and it's put forth, you know, goals of American imperialism, because of that, we are explicitly responsible as Americans. We are complicit. And that means that every bomb that is dropped to eviscerate a Palestinian man, every blockade that is put forth to starve his child, every bullet that is used to snipe his wife, every weapon that is used to murder his entire family, has your name, has your tax dollars, and has your complicity on it. But there is a chance that you can refuse it. You can refuse that complicity and stand for a ceasefire resolution. You can stand against it. As it was mentioned at the start of this video, that this land too was appropriated, this land was colonized, this land was used for means against humanity. And you have a chance to stand on the right side of history, to stand on the side of humanity, to stand on the side of human rights. My people, the Palestinian people deserve to be liberated from the shackles of their oppression and not, not condemned to a fate of death and destruction. Palestine is beautiful and it deserves to live. And it has been 140 days of genocide and 75 years. So free Palestine and ceasefire now. Thank you.
My name is Aviva Orenstein. I've lived in Bloomington since 1992, and I come before you today to seek your sponsorship and support of a ceasefire resolution. I am a Jew. My father was a rabbi, and my sister is a rabbi, and I'm also an Israeli citizen. My identities cannot blind me to the wrong that Israel has perpetuated as an occupier and an apartheid state, things that I've witnessed firsthand. Sadly, I feel compelled to speak out because of the great harm being done in my name, in my religion's name, in my people's name. In saying so, I of course acknowledge a complicated political situation that Israel has also suffered, and Hamas's behavior on October 7th violated basic human rights. This is a long and painful conversation that is not best attempted in two minutes. For me, though, it's as if a child of mine had done something tremendously awful. I would love that child, but I would do him no favor by pretending his actions were okay. And I certainly wouldn't threaten or diminish the harm to those who wrongfully suffered from somebody I love. Israel has become addicted to violence and callous to the humanity of its Gazan citizens, or of Gazan citizens. The continued bombing of Gaza is intolerable. And I agree that, with Charlotte, that we have to speak out locally. Ironically, it's also a terrible threat for Israel, which seems gripped by the delusion that it can bully Palestinians out of their rightful desires for dignity, freedom, safety, and equal rights. For the sake of innocent civilians, for the sake of children, we just cannot remain silent. Let's do what we can, even if it's symbolic. But it will speak to people, to condemn the continued violence and push for peace.
My name is Richard Bauman. I'm a Jewish Bloomingtonian, and I'm here tonight to urge the City Council to adopt a resolution calling for an immediate and long-term ceasefire in Gaza. I have relatives and dear friends in Israel, and I want them to be safe and live free of threats of violence. I mourn the dead on both sides of this devastating war. But I'm also sensible of the grotesquely disproportionate and vengeful violence and devastation that is being visited daily on the people of Gaza, people who have tried to survive and build lives and institutions under harsh and repressive conditions that have been imposed on them for decades. Casualty figures are abstractions, but it's impossible to ignore the barrage of images and testimonies that greet us daily of wounded, starving, traumatized, displaced Palestinian people who are being systematically deprived of shelter, food, water, and medical treatment as they seek refuge in an ever-more devastated landscape. It's heartbreaking to hear from Doctors Without Borders that they've had to come up with a new acronym to deal with current conditions, WCNSF, Wounded Child No Surviving Family. Conditions are so dire that the Interagency Standing Committee, the world body of global humanitarian organizations, has issued an urgent statement because they are being impeded from offering even minimal humanitarian aid and lifesaving assistance to the people of Gaza. It sickens me to have to realize daily that this destruction, loss of life, and burgeoning sense of despair are being significantly abetted by the policy of the US government and supported with my tax dollars. The state and federal governments need to hear that governmental bodies at the grassroots level feel a stake in this desperate situation and are willing to take a moral stand on behalf of the suffering people of Gaza. I've done what I can to try to influence my representatives in the federal government, but thus far, there are no clear signs they are listening. You on the City Council are our closest political representatives. I urge you on our behalf to adopt a ceasefire resolution and join the more than 70 American communities who have done so. Thank you.
Oh, excuse me. My name is David Sabag, and I'm up here with Pat Cole. Because, and I want to say Andy and Dave, because in 2003, we passed the Iraq Resolution. Dave tells me that was his first vote on City Council, "Welcome to council." And, and, and the resolution was correct. Unfortunately, the government didn't, didn't take our point of view. As a consequence, went in, destroyed Iraq, killed plenty of people, and also destroyed the infrastructure. While the infrastructure is still in bad shape, that means young kids can't get fresh water, and it's particularly harmful on the children. So I would ask you to take up this resolution that's going to come before you to a ceasefire. I am not asking you to take sides. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm asking you to take one side. Take the side of humanity, please.
Hi. Patricia Cole here. Springs back memories, that's for sure. I just want to say, in support of the resolution as well, in the best tradition of what the great city of Bloomington represents, a heart and a brain. And Bloomington is a city with a big heart. And we're calling here for a ceasefire. I think it's time for us to think about our hearts and not get caught in the weeds of politics or who did what, you know, the details. Let's, this is a small thing. This won't change things on a huge national level, more than likely. But every little step, I think, is a step toward change. And I feel like this is our duty to, to speak about this and to have a voice about it. So thank you all, and thank you for considering our request. And it's, it's good to see you and it's good to be here. Thanks.
My name is Dave Thielen. To me, the core issue tonight is not which side you support in the Israel-Hamas war. The core question is whether you will place the issue on the agenda for action by the Bloomington City Council. Will you create an arena in which Bloomingtonians and their elected representatives will discuss and decide this issue or hope that it will somehow disappear? I hope you will put it on the agenda. There's lots of precedent for doing this. For one thing, Charlotte and David and Patricia remind us that the City Council has done this a number of times. It's not such a big deal in Bloomington. For a second thing, dozens of communities now across the country have done exactly that on this issue. They've taken positions, small towns in California, Michigan, Detroit, Chicago, San Francisco, Atlanta, big cities too. So I think putting it on the agenda would be simply following precedent set both here and elsewhere. Finally, I'm a political historian. I do get why elected representatives might be reluctant to take positions that some will disagree with. But what makes democracy and representative government special is that we empower the people and their representatives to tackle the hard questions instead of leaving them to, well, dictators. So I think putting it on the agenda will reaffirm our faith in representative government. Thank you.
I'm going to stand. Yeah. Yeah, no, good. Thanks. Great. Thank you for letting us speak here. My main concern is with...
Your name?
Oh, yes. I'm Susan Sizer, retired professor at IU. I'm a Jewish American, and I'm feeling appalled by what the US government is doing and has chosen to do, to fight horror with horror. And what they're not recognizing about what this will do to our reputation globally. It will incite generations of traumatized Palestinians who will feel they have to fight back against us. And I feel there's so much hatred of us as a country right now because of our self-interest and our choice to arm genocidal attacks on thousands of civilians. So this is my main concern and fear, is that what we're going into here by not acting on a ceasefire is that we are going to be just fomenting many, many more wars and a lack of being a voice for peace in this world. So I urge you to do the little bit that we can to put our voice forward as a city that speaks for other-than-violent choices about how to deal with this very complicated world and situation. Thank you.
My name is David Keppel. I'm spokesperson of Bloomington Peace Action Coalition. I know, I have the privilege of knowing some of you personally. I believe that you are all highly intelligent, concerned citizens, and I'm sure that you are as distressed as anyone about the tragedy going on in Gaza. I think the question that you have to answer in choosing to sponsor this resolution is whether this is really the business of the Bloomington Common Council. I would suggest that just as you are responsible for Bloomington's physical infrastructure, its roads, its bike paths, its parks, you are also responsible for our democratic infrastructure. And in a situation that is approaching genocide, in which United States tax dollars are supporting that genocide, we as citizens and you as a common council have a responsibility not to look away, but to accept our responsibility to speak out on behalf of a humane solution, which includes a ceasefire and includes restored funding to the United Nations Works and Relief Agency, which is the main source of humanitarian help. So I hope that you will exercise your democratic power and responsibility on behalf of what makes this city so special. Thank you very much.
So far, over 30,000 people have died, 14,000 of which are children.
Could you please state your name?
Oh, Kyle Feldkamp. I'm a student at IU. I want to talk about one of those children, Dina Abu-Mosan. Back in December, she was killed, well, her, her two siblings and parents were killed in their home because of an Israeli airstrike. She lost both her legs in that incident and was treated at a hospital. A few days later, that hospital was bombed by a tank shell, and she died. She had wanted to become a doctor because of how much she saw the care that those health workers gave herself and all those around her. These are not just nameless numbers on a sheet. These are people with lives, with hopes and dreams. And the question at hand is, there's not going to be any justice. There's no justice here. This resolution is, cannot provide justice. But what it can provide is a voice of dissent, that this administration, what they're engaging in, is wrong, that we do not, we do not want to be complicit. We do, we dissent from that complicity. And it's for future generations. The question at hand is, what do you want your kids, your grandkids, to think about your actions when this genocide was committed? You know? The only way forward is a ceasefire now. Thank you.
My name is Nejla Routsong, and I'm a spokesperson for the CAPS Commission tonight. This letter was just passed in the CAPS Commission meeting held today at 4:30. And I'm going to go through it fairly quickly to try to stay under the two minutes. Dear Common Council members, the safety of Bloomington is indelibly intertwined with safety elsewhere, especially with the safety of the people in the occupied Palestinian territories and with the people in Gaza, a civilian population who's been under heavy siege and bombard... siege and bombardment since October 7th by Israeli munitions manufactured in the United States and by US-made attack helicopters and fighter jets. I'm shortening it for time. According to the Indiana Uplands website, this region is, quote, "seven times more concentrated in federal civilian defense employment than communities across the country," unquote. And military and defense contractors have over $1 billion impact annually in our region. Moreover, the state of Indiana purchased an additional $35 million in Israeli government bonds with the explicit intention of supporting Israeli aggression against the people of Gaza on November 1st, 2023. While the proceedings instituted by South Africa against Israel December 29th, 2023, before the ICJ, are still ongoing, the court has made an initial ruling that some of the acts appear to be capable of falling within the provisions of the Genocide Convention. It is the view of the CAPS Commission that the ongoing financial and military aid provided by the US government and the state of Indiana to support the actions being taken by Israel in Gaza constitute a growing threat to the safety of the Bloomington community by, one, undermining international norms protecting the safety of civilians in times of armed conflict, and, two, by making our community complicit in these unjust, violent, and harmful acts. We therefore ask the Common Council to swiftly endorse the proclamation affirming the city of Bloomington's support for an Israeli-Palestine ceasefire and permanent resolution to the conflict.
Good evening, respected council members. My name is Hamaya Tola-Shawani. I've spent more time of my life in Bloomington than anywhere else, graduated high school here, and also got my BS and MBA here at the Kelly School of Business. And I've been living in Bloomington for almost a decade now, after that as well. So the reason I'm here is to also call for an immediate and a permanent ceasefire in Gaza, as well as opening up humanitarian aid. I think it's, as mentioned and alluded to by many other speakers today, it is an immense tragedy what is happening. I mean, 30,000 lives, 70% of whom are women and children, 12,000 to 14,000 children, and that's not even counting the ones that have not been found under the rubble. And setting that aside, but also there's the, the mental trauma that has afflicted the entire population and the children, and the devastation that will have in the long run, not to mention the, the complete destruction of civil society. We're talking schools, residences, hospitals, what have you, cutting off of food, water, electricity, fuel, destruction of, killing even journalists and closing off channels. It's just utterly horrific and unjustifiable. Killing and maiming children is, is never justifiable. It can never be called defense, and with such large numbers. That's why the ICJ has taken on the case of genocide. It is ongoing. And regardless of what happens, the fact that they are on trial is bad enough. And so the question that future generations will ask is, you guys were alive during this time, what did you do? Were you silent? Were you complicit? And so that is the relevance to us here at Bloomington. We may not be able to control what is happening with our taxpayer dollars, the weapons that are being used to do that, but what we can do is to make a permanent record showing that we were not complicit, we were not silent. That is our alibi, that we can point to, that we were not okay with this. We wanted ceasefire, we chose humanity, we chose compassion, and we chose justice. And that's why it's relevant to us to be able to protect our own name and our own humanity, our own compassion, and our own reputations down the road. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Faza Mighty. I have been in Bloomington for about a year. I come from California. I am not okay with my tax dollars going to support a foreign war. I am an Algerian-American citizen. I'm not, I wouldn't expect us to be sending money to Algeria to support a bunch of war crimes. California had one of the first cities that passed a ceasefire resolution. It was in Hayward. It was not performative. Now that 70 cities across the US are following suit, let's add our name to that, let's make it 1,000. It becomes actionable and effective when more and more cities start to pass ceasefire resolutions. I know I'm strapped on time. It is also divisive to do nothing. It is a refusal to call for a ceasefire and allowing the Arab community and civilized people to watch and to force us to pay for an innocent population to be massacred, half of which are children, is divisive and it's wrong. In honor of Aaron Bushnell, who just set himself on fire on Sunday, in honor of the 13,000-plus children slain, 25,000 children orphaned, hundreds of thousands that are starving to death, the least that we can do as a city is call for a ceasefire. Israel and Palestine need to find diplomatic ways to deal with the land issue. Please add our city to the cities that are calling for ceasefire.
I wanted to remind everybody, please be sure and sign in if you haven't done so already on the clipboard there. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Dawud Mighty. I grew up here in Bloomington, Indiana. I've lived here my whole life. I wanted to say that, that I heard multiple council members support a ceasefire, but they don't see the relevance here locally. What I believe is that there nationally is intimidation and fear of being labeled antisemitic. This is shown in universities across the country and individuals. What I don't see is that no one's concerned about being Islamophobic. I here will express my experience here in this town. Right after 9/11, my math teacher told me that I should go back to my country because I'm not wanted here in class and sent to the principal's office. The principal begged me to not tell anyone or not tell my parents because she'll lose her job. So my parents wondered why I was melancholy for weeks. I've been called a terrorist multiple times growing up in this town. Faza, right here, ever since she started wearing her job, she's hard, was treated very differently in this town. The mosque has been vandalized countless amount of times in this town. I asked the brothers, why don't, why don't they speak up and say anything? And they say that they're afraid of the consequences and repercussions from the university and being deported. This town is a town that's built on love and hope. This is supposed to be the safe haven in Indiana, and right now, we are, you're failing this community. Not doing an action is an action. It is telling everybody that you support genocide and you support killing. We feel our hate, and everyone's concerned about one side, and no one seems to concern themselves on another side. And we're not asking to pick sides, we're just wanting the death to stop. Okay? Thank you. I want my daughter to grow up and not experience the racism I experienced in this town. This is a local matter.
Hi, may, may I ask a quick clarifying question before my time starts? I'm here on, to speak on the wilderness proposal. Is there a more appropriate time later to speak about that? Okay. Out of respect for my neighbors and their comments, I think maybe that would be better.
Yes, please be patient. We'll get to that. Thank you. Can I get this opportunity to ask Council Attorney Lucas if there are any hands raised on Zoom?
That I see, no.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Anne, Anne Cavalierchik. I have lived in Bloomington since 2019. When I enrolled at IU as a PhD student, I'm here to advocate, as a proud Jewish resident of Bloomington, that the City Council passed a ceasefire resolution to put a stop to the genocide in Gaza. I was the first person in my family to be born in the United States. My parents immigrated here to New Jersey as Jewish refugees from the Soviet Union. Before that, my, my family had lived in Belarus, a small country that borders Ukraine and Russia, for many, many, many generations. During the Holocaust, Belarusian Jews, including many personal family members, endured unimaginable horrors through deportations, indiscriminate killings, and also through disease and starvation. Somewhere between 80% and 90% of the total Jewish population was killed there. It is with this profound grief for the Jewish lives lost during the Holocaust that pushes me to cry for a ceasefire in Gaza today. Every single life is precious. The current level of destruction in Gaza amounts to a full-scale industrial genocide, not unlike that which Clyde claimed the lives of so many of my own family members. There are no more functional hospitals in Gaza, there are no more universities in Gaza. People are trapped under the rubble, dying while still hungry. Over 12,000 children have been killed, children as young as five are suicidal. None of this makes Jewish people any safer. It is out of my reverence for Jewish history, including that of my immediate family, that teaches me that all of us have a role to play to stop genocide. We must do anything and everything that we can to prevent the further loss of life. We must stop the genocide in Gaza, we must advocate for a ceasefire. Never again means never again for anyone. As a Jewish person, this is, to me, the most important lesson of the Holocaust. As a Jewish person, the Bloomington City Council passing a ceasefire resolution would demonstrate to me that the city also appreciates this lesson. Never again for anyone, ceasefire now, and free Palestine.
Rashid Mighty. I'm originally from Algeria. I flew from Paris to Indianapolis, Indianapolis, Bloomington, 50 years ago. And I fell in love with Bloomington and ended up staying here, and I did everything as anybody could do for a place they love. I ran for mayor's office in 1999. I did everything for this town as my home. And I have five kids, who they all went to high school, south. Now, the time is ticking, but I'll let you know, guys, I don't think anybody here knows what terror means as I do. I was born French, and I was called French Muslims. And I was born in war. And I know as a child, my parents didn't even know what it is, what I am, and I was putting booby traps to, the French camps. I risked my life, I almost was killed. Sixty, I was a little kid, and I was called terrorist. I was a little kid, why would I do that? I've seen atrocity. Thanks that I have seen, I witness, nobody of you's seen. You've never seen somebody being thrown out of helicopters, you've never seen, you know, I don't want to get into it because I know what it is. When I came here, I did protest for the apartheid state, I did everything. I was anti-war Vietnam, I was anti-everything that hurt human beings. 9/11, it was not on my name. As a Muslim, God said, whoever kill an innocent soul, as if he killed the whole humanity, whoever save a soul, he says, save humanity. That Islam, but those didn't represent me. And I believe the same thing, what Netanyahu is doing and the other, they are not representing the Jewish people, because there is a lot of them who are here with us protesting against it. So you guys, I'm sorry, I don't have time. I urge you guys for Bloomington, for everything, to do your conscience, don't be part of it.
Good evening, all. My name is Sadiq Karamahi. I am retired professor. I worked at IU and in Indiana, in Ohio universities as well. The thing that I'm going to tackle the topic from a different angle, which is, I think, first of all, I support definitely the ceasefire, permanent ceasefire, not just few minutes or to allow food and aid comes to Gaza or goes to Gaza. I don't think Netanyahu is really keen on protecting the Jewish kids or the Israelis kids, because he is actually squeezing the Palestinian in Gaza and in the West Bank, as a matter of fact. Now, in the West Bank, if you heard about Jenin camp, he allowed the soldiers to enter with tanks and forced the people, the Palestinian in Jenin camp, forced them to evacuate the camp, and he destroyed it. So when a person does this, do you think this would create peace or would generate another generation looking to revenge? That's why my point is, I don't think he cares for the Israelis as well as the Palestinians. It's for his own benefit, because he was about to be charged for illegal action in front of the government. Thank you very much. Thanks for listening.
Good evening, council members. My name is Daniel Siegel. I'm a 65-year-old Jewish American. I was raised in a large Jewish family in the wake of the Holocaust. We had neighbors with tattooed numbers from Auschwitz on their arms. My closest friend in the world never knew cousins or grandparents, all of them died in the camps. And my parents, may their memories be blessing, raised me to know that when genocide is unfolding, you don't continue with business as usual. You don't do the minimal, you do everything. So if you think, well, is this city business? Maybe not, so we don't have to do it. Or maybe not, but we'll do it anyway. Because when it's genocide, we do everything to have it stop. And if that had happened in the 30s, fewer Jews would have died. So that's what this is about. Will you do business as usual, or will, because it's genocide, you'll do everything? I'm also a retired professor. I taught Palestine-Israel and the plausible path for peace for many years. I'm also here tonight representing Jewish Voice for Peace Indiana. Jewish Voice for Peace has had over 700,000 participants in its actions in support of peace and Palestinian rights in the last year. We are the fastest-growing Jewish organization in the country. I think one of the important things tonight you've heard is all the Jewish voices that are standing in solidarity with our Palestinian sisters and brothers. You're used to a past when Jewish voices stood only for the state of Israel. That time is over. I hope you hear that. This is not antisemitic, this is about radical love. Support a ceasefire, let Gaza live.
Is there anybody else who would like to give public comment? We have about two minutes left. Mr. Lucas, is there anybody online?
No, not that I see.
All right. Well, thank you all for being here and for speaking out. Next, we will move to legislation, well, no, we will first go to appointments to boards and commissions. Do any council members have recommendations for appointments this evening?
I'll make, so appointment on, we'll propose appointments on behalf of Team B. The recommendations, should I make them one at a time?
You could do, well, it's up to you.
For the Bloomington Digital Underground Advisory Committee, I'd like to move to appoint Andy Coop for seat C1.
All right, Andy Coop has been recommended for appointment to the Bloomington Digital Underground Advisory Committee. Any questions, comments? Since we do have to do everything by a roll-call vote, would you consider adding other names before we do the vote?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Ruff, I just realized that that would take a long time.
For the Community Advisory on Public Safety Commission, to reappoint Nejla Raitzong. And then for the third appointment, for the, for the Environmental Commission, I'd move to reappoint Shannon Gake to seat C4.
All right, so those three appointments have been recommended by Team B. Are there any comments or questions? Councilmember Zulik.
Shouldn't we suspend the rules and vote on all three teams' recommendations at once? I guess that's a point of clarification.
Clerk Bolden seems very excited about that possibility. I don't even think we have to suspend the rules. Mr. Lucas, we could just put them all on the table and then vote together? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Other, other nominations? Councilmember Rallo.
Yes, Madam President, I'm, on behalf of Committee Team C, our recommendations are to move the appointment of Paul Anderson to seat C2 of the Bloomington Arts Commission, and to reappoint Yabon Binder to seat C3, and to appoint Stephen Volin to seat C5 of the Parking Commission.
Any questions or comments about those recommendations? Okay, are there any further? Councilmember Stossberg.
Yes, on behalf of Interview Committee Team A, I move that we reappoint-- Yes, on behalf of Interview Committee Team A, I move that we reappoint Herbert Caldwell to seat C2 on the Commission on the Status of Black Males, and Wendy Rubin to seat C1, and Robert Deport to seat C2 as reappointments for the Commission on Aging.
Interview Committee Team C, for the record.
Thank you, Councilmember Zulik. I forgot to ask for a second on that one. All right, any questions about the nominations that Councilmember Stasberg made? All right, well, then we can vote on that set of, I believe it was nine nominations altogether? Ten. Ten nominations. Thank you very much to our interview teams. And Clerk Bolden, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Pete Mountsmith?
Yes.
Stasberg?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Zulik?
Yes.
Thank you. And thank you to those individuals for their willingness to continue to serve or to serve for the first time on those commissions. Next, we will move to legislation for second readings and resolutions.
I move that Resolution 2024-02 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that Resolution 2024-02 be introduced and read by title and synopsis. Will the clerk please call the roll on this motion?
Yes. Councilmember Ruff?
Yes.
Pete Mountsmith?
Yes.
Stasberg?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
That motion passes. Will the clerk please read?
Resolution 2024-02 to amend Resolution 2322, which approved an interlocal cooperation agreement between the city of Bloomington and Monroe County, Indiana, for the operation of the Bloomington Monroe County Capital Improvement Board and the Convention and Visitors Commission to reconcile two versions of the agreement. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution amends Resolution 2322 to reconcile two versions of an interlocal cooperation agreement between the city and the county for mutual and collaborative support of an expanded convention center, related amenities, and necessary related entities, including the Capital Improvement Board and Convention and Visitors Commission, managing the expansion project and convention center operations. This resolution adopts the version of the agreement approved by Monroe County in February 2024.
Thank you.
I move that Resolution 2024-02 be adopted.
All right, and I believe we have Corporation Counsel Marji Rice to present this resolution to us this evening. Welcome.
And if this feels like deja vu, it's because it is. This is the second time this has been before you. Early this year, the county attorney came, gave me a call, and we started talking. And he and Stephen Lucas and I had some nice conversations, had lunch, reviewed these interlocal agreements, or this interlocal agreement, and made a few changes to it. The most significant change took out language that provided for the city to make recommendations to the CVC, which is a board created by statute. It's already a pretty tightly written statute, and it requires hoteliers to be on the board. And it's pretty hard for the county to find the right people to comprise that board. So it's not that, you know, you guys can't informally make recommendations, but we felt, we all felt like taking that requirement out, that the city council made recommendations, which may or may not be adopted by the county, would make sense. It also was a stumbling block, I think, for the county council, or at least some county council members. And so taking that out, there was a similar provision that said that nobody, this interlocal requires that you guys to create a building corp, or the city to create a building corp to issue the debt for a convention center. And there was a restriction in that and said that nobody, or that the CIB members, which is the Capital Improvement Board created by county ordinance, that the CIB members would be the members of the building corp. And we felt, I felt like that that was inappropriate. You guys should be able to put the members on the building corp that you want. So that language was stricken. We feel like this is a fair interlocal. I would encourage you to approve it. Once you approve it, it will go to the mayor for signature, and then it's complete because it's been approved by the county. The next step that I see taking place is that the interlocal requires the CIB to bring a budget to the city council for approval. There is a $250,000 appropriation that the council made. It's in the controller's budget. And the expenditures for the CIB will be paid with food and beverage tax dollars. So during the design and construction phase, the form of revenue that the CIB is going to have will be the city's food and beverage dollars. And so that's why the interlocal says that the city council, and only the city council, gets to approve that budget for the expenditures for the CIB during that construction phase. Once the convention center is up and running and they have their own revenue, it'll be a different story. But while they're using city food and beverage dollars, you guys have the approval authority over that. So I'm happy to address any questions you have. And I think Stephen, you know, and I have both reviewed it and think it looks good. So I hope you'll support it tonight.
Corporation Counsel Rice, are there any questions on this resolution from council members? No questions? Well, I don't have any questions either, so we may be moving along rather quickly. But let's go to the public. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment specifically about the interlocal agreement with Monroe County regarding convention center expansion? If so, please come to the podium and state your name for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Good evening, council. I'm Mike McAfee, Executive Director at Visit Bloomington. We promote Monroe County to leisure, business, and sports travelers, including helping to market the convention center. Thanks for your consideration of this important interlocal agreement that will enable the Capital Improvement Board to move forward on this longtime coming development. I'm moving a little slow tonight because my team and I, we hung 204 quilts at the Monroe Convention Center this morning, getting ready for the 26th Annual Indiana Heritage Quilt Show that starts tomorrow. I invite everyone here tonight to check it out at the center over the next few days. Approximately 2.5 million visitors came to Bloomington in 2023, 70% for leisure and 15% each for sports and business travel. Bloomington is a highly desirable meeting destination in the Midwest because of Indiana University and the connection to our walkable downtown with all the restaurants, nightlife, shops, and attractions that help create experiences that can only be found here. Meeting groups want the atmosphere created by our university culture and the super cool community personality, and they love to spend money at those business establishments. This is, this expansion, along with a new host hotel, will provide us with an opportunity to host groups of 300 to 500 people midweek when we have room to grow visitor business. With the beauty of all that being that they go home on the weekend, when our hotels, restaurants, shops, and all those hospitality businesses are at their busiest. Hotels are 80% full on weekends, but 60% full midweek. This is an opportunity to create responsible, impactful travel growth when we need it most. In 2022, visitors spent $471 million in Monroe County, $155 million on food, $111 million on shopping, $81 million on lodging, and $30 million on entertainment. $42 million was spent locally in our area on the goods and supplies supporting that tourism economy. 500 new midweek business travelers will give a much-needed economic bump to those businesses as their costs of doing business continue to rise. But it's much more than that. Along with IU and the organizations that bring business travelers to town, such as Cook Medical and The Mill, the convention center serves as a greeting card for our region. Often, it makes the first impression on a potential investor or talented workforce coming to our community that could invest or relocate here. We all know getting graduating students to stay here and recruiting talented workforce and families to move here is a challenging goal. The convention center is one of the necessary tools. We need to do that. The business and all the experiences happening inside the convention center are important, but the connections sparked there that come to fruition outside the convention center walls are just as important for the future of our community. Please support the interlocal agreement, and let's make this happen once and for all. Thanks again for your work on this. I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Next speaker, please come on up, and you have up to five minutes.
Good evening, Madam President, council, distinguished staff. This is Christopher MG from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. As you know, and I've been here before when this was before you, and I believe December, for multiple years now, the chamber has been a strong advocate for the expansion of our convention center. We are pleased with the progress with the CIB, and I will note that the CIB that is before you this time is shorter and I think a better agreement with the county. I appreciate the work that Corporation Counsel did, Mr. Lucas, Jeff Cockrell from the county on this. I think they did a really great job. I don't want to repeat anything that Mike McAfee said. I echo all of his sentiments. I have it right here, but I'm reading the room. You probably don't need to hear those. I just want to mention what this expanded convention center will do to benefit local charities and other civic organizations. Because this is a civic center as well, and it is very impactful for the community. These organizations depend on these large-scale events for their fundraising and outreach events. They need to raise the money to meet their mission. Because our existing center is inadequate of size to fully accommodate these events, our local civic and charitable organizations cannot achieve their full potential. I looked at my calendar for the 2023 year, so this might not include certain weekend events. I had 18 events that I went to at the convention center that year. It's a center that's used quite a bit for many local organizations. The Cooks Who Care was just sold out last Saturday. That was hugely successful and could benefit from this expansion. I thank you for your time, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Other public comment?
Hi, my name is Talisha Kopick. I'm with Downtown Bloomington and the Convention Center Management Company. We've been running the convention center for 33 years now. And thank you for considering this interlocal agreement. Welcome all new council members as well. It's an essential step in moving the expansion of the convention center forward. Businesses back post-pandemic and group size is growing. Last year, the convention center hosted over 400 events. 70% of those events have local connection, whether they be not-for-profit fundraisers, not-for-profit board meetings, annual meetings, local corporation employee recognition and training events. We do quinceaneras, receptions, baby showers, bridal showers, wedding receptions, reunions, retirement parties, and we do some memorial services. Local government events, such as the Women's History Lunches coming up, BEDC Annual Meeting, Chamber of Commerce events. We just hosted the Hoosier Hills Food Bank Suit Bowl and 100 Cooks Who Care. Both of those raised significant amounts of money for our local not-for-profits. Blingo Tri-Cappa fundraiser, the Humane Society History Center fundraisers. And interestingly enough, there's a little bit of overlap of the people who attend these events, but for the most part, these are different groups of people in our community coming together to support their organizations. But many of these are at their capacity, and they are cutting off ticket sales. There's also the handmade market, has 7,000 people that come in, flow over a two-day period, Artisan Guild over a two-day period, and they help support our local artists. So I just want to share that local events are very important. They will be very important in the future, and they will continue to be. We're a community that likes to gather and support our not-for-profits. That's just who we are. So I think it'll always be a big part of what we do. And they tend to book, you know, within a year or two years. Whereas, like with the conferences that we bring in, and we can host a 200-person conference, they're booking two or three, four years out sometimes. So it really works together very well with Sunday-through-Thursday business and the conferences, weekend business with a lot of the fundraisers. And a survey of meeting planners shared that we're second-most-desirable location in Indiana, but the smallest convention center. And a lot of it has to do with Indiana University. People like coming back to Bloomington. Alumni like coming back here. But it's also, I think, the progressiveness of the community that, you know, we're kind of inspirational in a lot of different topics. And a lot of the speakers are from Indiana University, so there's a good tie in there. And, you know, also the amenities downtown, entertainment, the national forest, golf courses. We've got a lot to share, and those needs are supported with outside dollars a lot of the time, so that we can support the amenities that the community can enjoy. Some of the conference topics, which I thought was interesting to share with you, and these are conferences that are coming up. We've got a Center for Integrative Study of Animal Behavior, and an early childhood intervention, secretly distribution, companies promoting music, they'll have a conference, Indiana Environmental Health Association, Association of Psychologists, National Guard Conference is coming for four days next week, Council for Exceptional Children and Special Education, Indiana Municipal Education, Electric Association, Department of Financial Institutions. And I wanted to just share that, so it shows you the variety of different topics that are being talked about. We can only hold 200 people at this point. For them to be able to divide out and use the building with their breakout spaces and general sessions, but in a larger facility, we're hoping to jump that up to do 250 conferences at a time, or maybe up to 500-person conferences at a time. We've got a strong repeat business and strong base to start a new center, so pretty excited about that. But we would support your support of this agreement. It's an important next step, and appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. And next speaker, please step up, and I hope everybody has been signing in as well.
Hi, my name is Jennifer. I'm the president of Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. I'm also a member of the Visit Bloomington Board. I'll just pretty much say ditto to all of my colleagues that came before me. Please support expansion of the convention center, and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Is there anybody who wants to comment who is on Zoom, Mr. Lucas?
Yes, I do see we have Eric Spoonmore. And if there are any other folks who would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand or send a chat to the meeting host.
Mr. Spoonmore, please go.
Good evening, council. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Eric, I'm Eric Spoonmore, President of the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. Appreciate you all considering this interlocal agreement tonight. The chamber is a, an organization that's been in the community, as you know, for about 109 years now. We represent 850 member organizations. About 80% of those employers are small businesses. A lot of them are also food and beverage establishments, some of the great places that we all know and love, that we all patronize and make Bloomington such a unique, vibrant, fun place to live, work, and have a good time. And so I want to encourage your support of this interlocal agreement tonight. One of the, one of the things that I wanted to remind the council of as we think about this is that over the winter break, we had a number of businesses, locally-owned businesses, that were downtown, had to make the very difficult decision of closing. A lot of these were food and beverage types of establishments, employed local residents. And I think this is, to be able to expand our convention center is some of the lowest hanging fruit that we have to bring that weekday traffic and additional visitors and tourism dollars to be able to support our locally-owned, in many cases, family-owned businesses. businesses that can support our local workers here. And, you know, that's, that's the kind of thing that keeps me up at night as the president of the Chamber of Commerce. When we see businesses close, it breaks my heart. And I, I, I think about all the time, what could we have done as a community differently to support those businesses? And this is our opportunity right now to make that happen so that our business community can thrive. So I encourage you to support this. We've been talking about it for a long time. Appreciate all the great work that our city and county elected officials have been doing, both in city and county legal and working on this new interlocal agreement. I think as Ms. Rice said earlier, it's a very fair agreement and it's going to allow us to move forward in earnest with this long awaited expansion of the Monroe Convention Center that's going to greatly enhance the economic development and vitality of our downtown. And I think my colleague, Mr. MG, did a great job of discussing, discussing how this will be a, a great civic center as well too. So thanks for your consideration of it and urge your approval of it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom?
Not that I see.
Anybody else in council chambers would like to comment on this item? All right, well, if not, we'll come to, back to council members. Are there any discussion, any council comments at this point? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
I have a comment. Are you saying it's time for that?
Yes.
Okay, I have actually prepared like quite a bit to talk about on this because we haven't really had a space to do that. And now that this resolution is here, I think it's time to get a few things out. So I think what I want to start with is what do people want and like Bloomington residents? And we have our biennial Bloomington Community Survey that asks about the convention center and has asked the last four times, so 2017, 2019, 2021, and 2023, most recently. And in this survey, Bloomington residents assessed the importance of four possible community focus areas for the city to prioritize in the next five years. Respondents most prioritized in investing in citywide high-speed fiber, high-speed fiber for internet access. That was 68% deemed that essential or very essential and it, it was 68 to 72% over the four, the four cycles that we have. Developing the Hopewell Neighborhood was added in this last one and that came in at 65%. Developing the Trades District came in at 62%. And in 2023, the expansion of the convention center was 18%. So this is people who deem it essential or important. The convention center over was on all four of those years. So 2017, it was 18%, 2019, 20%, 2021, so in the pandemic, it was 16%. And most recently, it was 18%. So according to the community survey that we do consistently, people are not considering this the way they prefer to spend these dollars. And so I think then what we might, we might want to ask at least is, you know, in 2017, there was a resolution for this convention center expansion and then an ordinance that created the food and beverage tax. And that ordinance says, it's really dictated by Indiana code that the tax is authorized by state law and may be used only to finance, refinance, construct, operate, or maintain a convention center, a convention center, or related tourism or economic development projects. So that line starts out pretty specific about what you can do with a convention center, but then kind of blows up to anything tourism-related or economic development projects. So for me, it's a really big deal to think about, you know, over that's 2017, we, this is seven or eight years later. Does this still make sense for our community, both like fiscally and just what people are looking for in general? So just, just kind of like commenting on what some folks have said, I don't know if Indiana code allows for the private sector to build or maintain large meeting spaces over 200 people in our downtown area. So I don't know the answer to that. And so part, I mean, people have talked about not having any, but does code even allow it at this, at this point in time, you know, for anyone other than the city to, to build something like this? I think also that there is demand for it. The private market would build it. I also think if we're talking about economic development in our downtown, so we want more people eating, drinking, shopping there, we have these blocks with the, with these parking lots and vacant spaces that could instead be housing, which is something our community so desperately needs. And this would be walking transit oriented housing that wouldn't just spur economic development 50% of the time, it would do it 100% of the time. So instead of trying to get people here on a short-term basis for a day or two, I think looking at more, getting more people into downtown permanently is a really good solution for small businesses to be able to stay open and make more money. So another thing is just that there's been a lot of data over the decades on convention centers. I'm sorry, I'm just going to keep going about this, I guess I don't have to apologize. But convention center information nationally, there's a book, Convention Center Follies, and there are many articles out there about this. But the United States has seen a dramatic increase in convention center space in recent years. From 1989 to 2011, the amount of square footage devoted to convention space increased from 36.4 to 70.5 million square feet, an increase of 94%. The GAO calls the nation's supply of convention space, quote, abundant, while another expert says flatly, quote, there are too many convention centers, end quote. Meanwhile, demand for such spaces is largely flat, a phenomenon that exists independent of paradigm changes such as COVID-19 or 9/11. More than half of facilities nationwide report flat or falling attendance over the past decade, while the growth of convention center revenue has fallen 79% from Q1 2011 to Q2 2021. So this is then just to like spark some like conversation, obviously not here at this council meeting because we don't tend to do that, but just in general. There is this really awesome new trail that's getting built from New Albany all the way up to Bedford. Bedford is called the Monon South Freedom Trail. The route is nearly 63.2 miles long and connects five counties in Indian Uplands where we exist. The Monon South Trail will follow the route of historic Monon Railroad, beginning in New Albany and running through the communities of Borden, New Pekin, Salem, Campbell'sburg, Satillo, Orleans, and Mitchell. It includes portions of Floyd County, Clark County, Washington, Orange, and Lawrence County, ending just before it gets to Monroe County. The trail offers dramatic vistas of the Indiana farmland and linkages to several regional national, natural destinations, including nearby state parks. To jumpstart the trail's development, DNR will grant partners an additional $24 million in next level trails funding to begin design, engineering, and construction of this. There's approximately 440,000 people living in, within 10 miles of this trail. So just thinking about something that brings economic dollars and tourism to Bloomington that is like equitable, healthy, and also benefits the people already living here, like the Monon Trail would be like an awesome thing to connect to if at all legally possible. It's, I'm not saying that's what we need to do. I'm just saying there are so many ideas, I think, that we as a community could talk about as to like, do we want to spend the food and beverage tax on this convention center or is there something that makes more sense now? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosenbarger. Are there other comments on this resolution? Councilmember Rallo?
Yeah, just briefly to say I want to recognize John Wykurt, who's president of the CIB, for attending this evening. And I appreciate your work and the work of the board members. I think Mr. Spoonmore referenced the facility as a convention center, but also a civic center. And that was integral in our decision to support the food and beverage tax and, and the project at large. And it still is for me. I, I realize that there are many advocates for commerce who've spoken and, but there is a public civic component to this, aspect to this. And it was the expectation of the businesses, those restaurants that supported the food and beverage tax when we, when it was proposed, that we follow through on this proposal, that we fulfill this, their expectation. I understand that the landscape has changed to some degree with COVID, people meeting virtually and so forth, but it seems the demand still is there for conventions to visit Bloomington. And it is still my expectation that this will be a civic facility for the public as well and therefore a benefit to the community in downtown. So I'll be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Any other comments from council members? Councilmember Stossberg?
Thank you. I don't, I'm, I'm new to this game, right? I've only been sitting here for about six weeks, so I'm new to this whole proposal, which has been ongoing for a number of years. And I would probably say that I, I agree a lot with what Councilmember Rosenbarger just said about, about tourism, about the community sentiment through that survey around the importance of a convention center. But the reason why I'm going to vote for this interlocal tonight is because it has been being worked on for a long time. There are deadlines to do with when this money has to be spent and I think that it's not practical to think about steering the boat in a new direction at this point and still managing to maintain all the dollars that we have been accumulating with this plan to move forward with a new convention center. So that I think is the summary of my position tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Flaherty?
Interesting thoughts from my colleagues. Appreciate the comments we heard from the public as well. Last Saturday, there was a candidate forum for the District Five caucus seat and one of the candidates repeatedly brought up these city surveys as a tool that we really underutilize and should make use of. They're the only representative statistically valid samples of Bloomington opinion that we actually have. They're better than, you know, the election itself in terms of like actual representation. It's, it's the whole community, not just who showed up to vote or, or, you know, who showed up to a council meeting. And it's pretty stark, you know, looking over time, how little the community as a whole actually prioritizes this project. I understand certain constituencies want it for various reasons. I think Councilmember Rosenbarger makes a very good point about, you know, permanently putting thousands of people in close proximity to downtown businesses and restaurants as opposed to doing it a couple of days a week in, in a sector that's fraught with challenges over time, as evidenced by, you know, extensive data and history. I guess I would challenge us to, well, a couple, a couple additional thoughts. One is that I don't really put a lot of credence into the fact that some people thought X about this thing in 2017, that this was the plan in 2017. It was a different body of elected officials in a different context at a different time. It's 2024 right now and we're hearing in the context of public safety facilities investments that what the council said last year doesn't matter. You know, we're hearing, we're hearing that from colleagues and from the mayor. So in clearly in other contexts, we're hearing, you know, very little regard for what past elected bodies thought. And so I just wanted to point out that inconsistency in logic being applied when we say we have to follow through on what a group of elected officials in 2017 thought. There's a range of legal allowed uses for those funds. I think we should be thoughtful about where we choose to invest, approve investments in the, in the future. I won't oppose this interlocal agreement, but I'm going to be very circumspect in, in reviewing proposals. And I guess I'd invite us to consider the possibility that like, we don't have to spend 100% of the food and beverage tax on the convention center. It could be half and we could spend the other half on other uses that serve our residents more directly. Additionally, the amount of land that's been aggregated for that expansion far outstrips what could possibly be needed. And for that reason, we should still consider those uses for housing and other things that are, that are deeply needed and provide again, benefits to our downtown business community and others. And even things like the, you know, Justice Center complex needs. There's a lot of open, open land and space there. So just throwing that out as another possibility, possible use. So I think that's it for me on thoughts. I appreciate, again, what my colleagues shared, in particular, Councilmember Rosenbarger bringing data to the, the conversation.
Thank you. Any further comments? I'll take a crack at it. So I, I'm, I was hesitant all along to raise money in order to expand a convention center because the convention business, especially for a small city like Bloomington, is really focused, reliant on vehicles, cars, fossil fuel, transportation to get people here for those conventions. And so even in 2017, when Mayor Hamilton asked this body to approve a resolution that asked the county council to pass the food and beverage tax, I abstained in that case. I didn't feel like it was, it was my role and I wasn't real excited about the prospect of investing public funds in convention center expansion. The, you know, the climate crisis has only gotten more dire and so I still have those serious reservations. I think that my colleagues bring up some really good points as far as, you know, what's the future of the convention center business? Is it really a good investment of public funds, given that so many in our community don't seem to prioritize it? But I think at this point, I'm, I'm in support of this particular step. I think we've gone really far down the line with this planning, but I think that, just like Councilmember Flaherty said, I, I will be very circumspect in approving funding for the project to make sure that we have a sustainable building and investment in public transportation from the airport and from other communities in the state so that we try to reduce the carbon footprint as much as we can and have funds left over to invest in other more sustainable economic development opportunities. And I have no doubt, as Councilmember Flaherty said, that there will be land left over that has been banked by either the city or the county that won't all be needed for this expansion, which should go towards housing because we're in desperate need of more housing and living in that area downtown would enable people to walk or bike to where they need to go and not be reliant on a car or at least driving very far. So that said, I think we can call the question.
Second? We just call it?
We just call it. Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
No.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and that is adopted 801. So that convention center interlocal agreement moves on to...
Pete Munsmith, that's 71?
Yes, I'm sorry. I keep forgetting. We are missing a council member, so it passes 71. So that will move on to the mayor's office then for final approval after I sign it, I suppose. Then we move on to our second resolution of the evening.
I move that resolution 2024-03 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to introduce?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
And Pete Munsmith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will you please read by title and synopsis?
Yes. Resolution 2024-03, Resolution Urging Passage of United States Senate Bill 2990 Regarding the Expansion of the Charles C. Dean Wilderness and the Establishment of the Benjamin Harrison National Recreation Area. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution- This resolution, sponsored by councilmember Dave Rallo, would endorse and urge the passage and enactment of United States Senate Bill 2990, which would establish the Benjamin Harrison National Recreation Area, as well as expand the Charles C. Deane Wilderness through designation of 15,300 acres of National Forest System land. If passed, this resolution would direct the city clerk to send a copy of it to the Indiana congressional delegation.
And just a brief correction. I believe that councilmember Ruff is co-sponsoring the resolution?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I move that resolution 2024-03 be adopted.
Thank you.
All right. And so councilmember Rallo, would you like to start the presentation on this resolution?
Happy to. I have just some brief remarks. Invited to present this evening also is Jeff Stanton, who's the executive director of the Indiana Forest Alliance, and Sherri Mitchell-Brooker, who's the founder of Friends of Lake Monroe, which is an advocacy group founded in 2016 to protect Lake Monroe and its watershed. And they have some very important comments to make on this resolution. So the resolution is in support of a bill before Congress. I think it may be attached to the farm bill coming. This is S2990, proposed and sponsored by Senator Mike Braun of Indiana. It does two things. It effectively doubles the size of the Deane Wilderness. Could we have the map? That would be more instructive than hearing me talk about it, or at least I could point toward it. Okay. So it does two things. It doubles that green area. You'd find a kind of a gray-green, which is the Deane. You could point to it with a cursor, and it expands it to include the other green area. It currently consists of about 13,000 acres, so it doubles that area. And then it also creates a national recreation area, the Benjamin Harrison National Recreation Area, consisting of 29,000 acres, which is the purple and is encompassed by the red line, which surrounds that wilderness. So a designated wilderness area receives special legal status under the Wilderness Act of 1964, which essentially means it's protected by federal law to preserve it in its natural condition and prevents people and businesses from using it for commercial purposes. So it entails much greater protection than what it exists, than that area exists as it is now. The protection of this ecosystem, as the resolution states, one of the whereas clauses, the designation, the expansion of the Deane, quote, "should facilitate returning large tracts of old forest to old growth condition on a landscape scale and assist in providing an ample habitat for species such as the cerulean warbler, timber rattlesnake, Indiana bat, northern long-eared bat, tricolored bat, and other forest-dependent animals, plants, and fungi that are endangered or rare in the state and which have been identified present in these forests by recent Indiana Forest Alliance surveys," unquote. The forest in this area of the Hoosier National Forest is transitioning to old growth with tree ages of 130 to 140 years old. Original old growth in perspective, original old growth for Indiana used to consist of 20 million acres, only 2,000 remain. So it's important ecologically, but this area also consists of a significant portion, as you can see, of the Lake Monroe watershed. Lake Monroe is our only water supply and supplies water for 130,000 people. We know that it's being negatively impacted by siltation and nutrient load, logging in the watershed, or other disturbances increases both. So needless to say, it's important for our community that this bill is adopted, and I'm hoping for your support this evening. A similar resolution was adopted by our county colleagues last December. And my co-sponsor, councilmember Ruff, do you have any additional remarks?
Oh, thank you, councilmember Rallo. Just to add that, you know, to me, particularly in a state like Indiana, this part of the country, this seems like a relatively rare opportunity that we should seize. You know, a lot of, I think the percentage of the land of Indiana that's in designated wilderness is .05 of 1%, and most of our wilderness areas are in the West, certainly in Alaska. Once you take Alaska out of the picture, I think of the whole country, it's 2% or 3% of the land in the U.S., in the contiguous lower 48, is wilderness designated, and most of that in the West. So this really seems like, at a time when we are, seems like we're fighting on public lands more to prevent exploitation, to prevent mining and drilling and more intensive exploitation and selling off of access and resources, and that we have an opportunity to add to our most highest level protected level of public land, which is what a wilderness designation does. It's the highest level of protection and the most restrictive in terms of use. It seems like something that we should certainly seize now. I think future generations will benefit. So I think there's, you know, there's a lot of values we can talk about that could accrue to doing this, but one of them is provision to the future, to future generations of access to an area that's been protected like this and that has these natural values and provides the ecosystem services to our lake, to our drinking water source, and carbon sequestration and other things, ecological integrity that are provided at a higher level by a designation like a wilderness area. So when councilmember Rallo asked me the other day if I would co-sponsor, I eagerly agreed to do that. My undergraduate degree actually was a Bachelor of Science from Cornell University in Natural Resource Management, Forestry, Fisheries, and Wildlife. So this is an area that I have some background in, and I'm thrilled to be able to support a resolution that we hope will have some encouraging effect for this designation at the federal level.
Thank you. So sponsors, would you like to turn to Mr. Jeff Stanton at this point?
Yes.
For our presentation?
Yeah.
Please come on up and introduce yourself, and if you could, I think you have about 10 minutes or so.
A map I'd like to share at some point. I sent it to you. I don't know if you have it. You can flip to that when we're ready. It's the one that shows the... Yeah. When it's time. Okay, good. I'm Jeff Stanton. I'm the executive director of the Indiana Forest Alliance, and I have spent countless hours in the areas that are involved in this bill over the last 46 years, leading outings, doing biological census work, and just writing statements along with many, many other people trying to save this area. And so the work with Mike Braun and his staff drafting this legislation was kind of the culmination of that effort. But the second point is time is of the essence here. We started trying to save this area back in 1973, 51 years ago, when then supervisor of the Hoosier National Forest, Claude Ferguson, proposed that it be one of the first eastern wilderness areas in the United States under the Eastern Wilderness Act, which at the time was being considered by Congress. And we got two bills through the U.S. Senate that would have established a wilderness area, one of them, and a wilderness study area out in the area of twice the size of the 16,000-acre area he proposed, all centered at Nebo Ridge. But we never could get anything through the U.S. House because of the opposition of private landowners, and then later the opposition of the state to a compromise that would have included some Army Corps of Engineers land behind the reservoir. So ever since then, we have been trying to save it one way or another, through management plans and so forth. And so enter Mike Braun, gets elected to the U.S. Senate in 2018, and for as little as I agree with Mike on about anything, I do actually strongly support his views about forests, particularly public forests. He is a man who grew up in southern Indiana, roaming forests. He loves the deep woods of Indiana. He also has a strong feeling that public forests should be for public uses, distinct from private forests. And so he, four years ago, said, why don't we sit down and draft some legislation to realize your dream, Jeff, of expanding the Deane? And, you know, my jaw dropped that he would actually do that, and so we spent time doing that and introducing it last year. But here we are. He's retiring at the end of the 118th session of the Congress, which is this year. It's an election year. They'll probably adjourn early to get out and campaign. So time is of the essence. The window is about to shut again, and we're going to be back to just trying to forever save this area from one threat after another as it comes up. The third point is that this proposed wilderness addition and the national recreation comprise some of the most ecologically valuable intact forests in the central hardwood forest region of eastern North America. This is the most fragmented and decimated of forest regions in the entire North American continent. And quite simply, the reason that the 15,300 acres that are in the wilderness addition in the Nebo area have been, every acre has been set aside entirely from logging and road building and other activities that would diminish its wild character, is because the Forest Service has recognized that value of the area. So it's been set aside now for two management plans. We've had to overcome a lot of debate, but we've managed to do it twice now. Now we're up for a new renewal and new debates about what to do with the area. And you, the, so the point I'm trying to make is that there is no block of contiguous forests when you take into account Brown County State Park, the Charles Deane Wilderness, that is this large, that would be protected as protected public land for public enjoyment anywhere in the states of Ohio, Indiana, or Illinois, or anywhere in the central hardwood regions that's this large. And so it's an incredible opportunity, and it's a very unique one. The forest throughout it is mature, trending towards old-growth forest. The fourth, the next point is that we have been documenting the ecological value and the biodiversity of the area now for the last five years, and we have found in the Nebo area, in a census tract we've been looking at, the highest density of timber rattlesnakes anybody's ever recorded anywhere in the state. Their range now is limited to the Brown County hills and a few spots in the Shawnee Hills in the central region of the state. They're state-endangered. We found as many as 10 on a single hike in the area. That's quite unusual. We've found five endangered or proposed to be endangered bats in the Nebo area and south of the Houston South area. And the last maternity roost for the northern long-eared bat that we know of that was found in the state was in the Nebo area in our census several years ago. And then maternity roosts last summer for the Indiana bat and the tricolored bat further south in the Houston South area proposed for all the logging. We've documented cerulean warbler nesting territories at 23 per square mile. You can't find that anywhere else in the state. It's a state-endangered bird whose range-wide population has declined by 60% since the 1960s. We found robust populations of a litany of other forest interior birds that are rare and declining in the state. They're species of special concern, like the worm-eating, black-and-white, hooded warblers. I could go on. We found a new bee species, a mining bee. They live underground, but we found them in the tree canopies. And they had been found in three other forests, but only the males. At Combs Creek draining Nebo Ridge, we found the first females, in addition to males, first females of the species ever found this past, a year ago this past summer. We've found new spider species out there. They're living in the forest stuff, the stuff that the Forest Service wants to burn, right? These are new species to science, so we don't even know what we're burning up when we do that. We found about to double the number of lichens known to exist in the state. There's a long list of other things. We're in the middle of that survey. We're not done. But what I want to talk about is also is that the Houston South project, which will be enveloped in this legislation, would destroy a lot of this unique biodiversity that's inherent to deep forest tracts that are not fragmented. And if we could put that map on the screen, it should say old-growth forest logging across the Nobstone Trail. So in addition to harming the ecology, the unique ecology, and threatening the water supply, which Professor Bruker or Dr. Bruker will talk about, here's a map I drew today of, I just want to show you. The Nobstone Trail has just been put through the area, Indiana's longest backpacking trail. This will connect the Floyd Nobbs up clear to the Tecumseh Trail in Brown County and onward up into the Morgan and Roeth state forests. You see that orange dotted line there going through the Houston South area. That's it. Now, all those circles, all right, these are just some of the older tracts that are going to be logged in the Houston South project. Up there in the far left corner, you see a chestnut oak stand that dates, according to Forest Service data, is 217 years old. It's going to be logged. The next to it, a chestnut oak stand, it's 143 years old. Next to that, I have it marked on the map, is one that's 138 years old, all to be logged. And what that green there is shelterwood cutting. The chestnut oak further south along the Nobstone Trail, there's a 123-year-old stand. Below that is one that's 137 years old. Then the next one down is 101 years old, mixed oak. Below that is the next stand, it's mixed oak, it's going to be logged, 122 years old. The mixed oak below that is 158 years old, started in 1866. The chestnut oak below that's 135 years old. The stand below that is a 77-acre stand. It's all going to be shelterwood logged. That means phased clearcutting. Takes them 15 years to remove the forest canopy, but eventually all of it's gone, right? This is 96 to 103 years old. Throughout that stand, the entire canopy is going to be removed. In fact, most of these older forest stands out there that we're talking about are going to be shelterwood cut. The stands below that are 102 years old, and then there's one that's 109 years old. But you can't walk the Nobstone Trail through the entire Houston South area without having to go through a stand that's going to be heavily selective logged, or the canopy is going to be removed altogether in this shelterwood phased clearcutting. So what we're trying to say is the Houston South project is a radical project. It's of a size unprecedented in the history of the Hoosier National Forest. And Sherri will talk about how it's on slopes that are exceeding, in many cases, 35%. It's ridiculously steep to be logging on those slopes, particularly with something like shelterwood cutting. And they're not planning to monitor at a single station, at a single stream leaving those sites, monitor any water quality from that site. It's just all out on the south fork. That's ridiculous reactive monitoring that won't detect a problem until it's a catastrophe. So I'm going to close by saying that 2990 will avert this tragedy. It won't, for 78% of the Houston South project, it will still let the Forest Service propose vegetative treatments and prescribe burning if it's in line with the existing land and resource management plan of the Hoosier National Forest. It will just require them to tone it down, to have to monitor it, and to make sure they manage the national recreation area surrounding the wilderness to protect the Monroe reservoir water supply, to promote recreation, and to protect the visual and aesthetic values and ecological values of that forest. So you have an unprecedented opportunity at your doorstep to save an area that's unparalleled in the industrial heartland of this country for wilderness recreation. The economic benefits of doing that and of protecting the reservoir that is part of the economic foundation of your community are such that we think, we urge you to act. The need to act is urgent, and so I urge you to pass this resolution and communicate your wholehearted support for the expeditions and enactment of this legislation. And you might want to put up the next map, which shows the slopes that they're logging on, yeah, at the Houston South project. And thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Why don't we go to Dr. Mitchell-Brooker first, and then we can do questions? And then we can do questions that sound good to the sponsors? All right. Welcome.
Hi. Can you hear me okay? Okay. I wasn't going to talk about that, but if you can scroll that up just a little bit, I'll explain this map.
Could you please confirm your name for the record?
Oh, sorry. I'm Sherry Mitchell Bruker.
Thank you.
And so this map is slopes, the white is 0 to 20%, the yellow is 20 to 35%, and the red is 35% slope or more. I can tell you, we have another map that was taken from the USDA Soil Survey that categorized almost everything that you see there in orange and yellow as highly erodible soils and not really good for logging. So again, my name is Sherry Mitchell Bruker. I'm the founder and president of Friends of Lake Monroe, and our mission is to protect and enhance Lake Monroe and its watershed through science, advocacy, and public involvement, working collaboratively with citizens, government, and business to improve and support lake water quality. I'm a hydrologist with more than 30 years' experience in water resources, research, and management. I have a PhD in environmental science from Indiana University with a focus in hydrology. I worked for the federal government for 10 years in both research and management, including three years with Lassen National Forest as their chief forest hydrologist and watershed manager. In that role, I supervised hydrologists and watershed and soil scientists, whose duties included best management practice, oversight, and analysis of the soil and water impacts from proposed projects such as controlled burns, timber harvest, and stream restoration. Some of you may not know, but the national forest system was actually established to protect water quality. What had happened is that a lot of the land had been logged. It was severely eroded. It damaged the water quality, and so the government took over this land and protected it. Based on my review of Hoosier National Forest's past and present management and condition, I strongly encourage council members to enact a resolution to support SB 2990, a bill that protects more than 15,000 acres of forest land as wilderness and ensures that activities in the adjacent 30,000 acres of recreation area will not harm Lake Monroe water quality. SB 2990 is protective of Lake Monroe water quality and a proactive step in combating climate change. I started Friends of Lake Monroe at a time when the level of toxins in the city of Bloomington drinking water was very close to exceeding safe drinking water standards. The problem, which the city of Bloomington has since been able to manage with new and complex and expensive treatment, is caused by the interaction of poor-quality lake water and the disinfectants needed to purify the water. But there are still some residual taste and odor issues that stem from the poor lake water quality, and without intervention, my expectation is that these conditions would worsen. For this and other reasons, it is vital that we improve water quality in Lake Monroe. The key to improving water quality in Lake Monroe lies in reducing the amount of mobile, phosphorus, and nitrogen in the lake's watershed, since those nutrients stimulate harmful algal blooms that interfere with drinking water treatment and hinder recreation. Those nutrients come to the lake from many sources, including soil and stream bank erosion, farm runoff, septic leaching, and other activities such as logging and burning. The city of Bloomington, and Monroe County, and the state of Indiana have been working with Friends of Lake Monroe, spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to reduce the amount of nutrients and sediments that are released into the streams that feed Lake Monroe. Much of what we do involves working with landowners to reduce nutrient and sediment runoff from relatively small 1-20 acre plots. In comparison, Hoosier National Forest manages 50,000 acres in the watershed, and that's a $280,000, $280,000 acre watershed. That's almost 20% of the watershed. So SB 2990 protects 45,000 of those acres. Believe me when I say that Hoosier National Forest management is critical to Lake Monroe water quality. Without SB 2990, Hoosier National Forest would engage in a risky and questionable effort to force regeneration of oak and hickory in the proposed wilderness and recreation areas. This oak-hickory restoration is accomplished by repeatedly burning, logging, and applying herbicide to thousands of acres of healthy, mature, and old-growth forests established on steep slopes with highly erodible soils. These activities would result in increased amounts of phosphorus and nitrogen load to Lake Monroe, increasing algal blooms and negating our efforts to reduce nutrient and sediment loads. Recent Forest Service research reveals that in order for this type of restoration to be effective, it is necessary to completely eliminate the organic layer of decomposed leaves and other plant material that forms the top layer of the forest soil. This top layer, known as duff, serves as an important function in retaining soil moisture, reducing runoff, and capturing sediment and nutrients that would otherwise flow to the lake. And as Jeff has said, it also is a harbor for different organisms, some of them newly discovered. Additionally, the controlled burns that are proposed under the Houston South Project would not occur if the wilderness is expanded, thus eliminating the risk of catastrophic fires, such as the U.S. Forest Service controlled burn that grew into the largest wildfire in New Mexico and polluted the public water supply of Las Vegas and nearby communities. I repeat, this was a controlled burn utilizing U.S. Forest Service best management practices. Finally, the bill ensures that the recreation area plan, developed in cooperation with the local community, will ensure that activities in the recreation area will not negatively impact the lake. All these considerations should compel the city council to support SB 2990 and take further steps to ensure that forest management in the Lake Monroe watershed does not impair our water supply. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell Bruker. Are there questions from council members, either for the sponsors, or for Mr. Stanton, or for Dr. Mitchell Bruker? Councilmember Stossberg?
Thank you. I just, I'm not sure who the best person is to ask this question to, but it's about the fact that the bill itself is unfunded. And I'm just wondering if, because it feels like you need money to, say, maintain a national recreation area, and the fact that the bill itself doesn't have any funding attached to it just makes me wonder. So that might be a Mr. Stanton question.
Senator Braun wants the Forest Service to change its priorities and to appropriate money for the recreation area from its existing budget. And that's his, he has a general view about that across federal government. So he's very strong, he has very strong views that way. But the history of national recreation area creation, there's about 40 of them in the country in the national forests, and they're usually around water supply reservoirs. And what they tend to do is bring more Forest Service resources and money to the area than we're coming to it prior to the designation of a national recreation area. We have a fact sheet on that that points that out with several national recreation areas that were created. They bring in infrastructure investment in the, like the visitor's center, and in law enforcement, and in trail creation and so forth. And so that's what, that would be in the future of the NRA. That's part of, part of that would be, happen with the development of this plan within five years of the enactment of the legislation. What the law would do immediately is to stop all of the, or hopefully, put the brakes on the Houston South Project, and it would expand the wilderness area. But in terms of that investment in the area from the federal government, that would hopefully come with the plan that's adopted for the area. And it has definitely happened for other national recreation areas across the country. It's increased the budget that the Forest Service gets for a particular national forest where that recreation area is. But Senator Braun thinks also that, you know, he questions things like, why do you have, and I shouldn't speak for him, but, you know, I would say, we have a fire staff now at the Hoosier National Forest of 16 to 18 people on staff to burn forests that we don't think ever burned significantly naturally. And so we're going out there, creating a, you know, a need, and then funding that. And we have one person that works on enforcement at the Dean. Well, we need to change that priority. And so we think this legislation would help get that done.
Councilmember Ruff? Do you have a question?
Well, I was going to ask Mr. Stanton. You know, any decision about priorities or any change of priorities on a resource, on a public resource, there are going to be some activities that are enhanced in the quality of the experience or the use that are consistent with the ultimate goal of that change in policy or priority or designation. There are going to be some activities that are impacted more restrictively. We think about logging and intense uses, but even when it comes to recreation, there will be some impacts that come along with this. And I was wondering if you might talk about, about those concerns that folks might have that there'd be restricted, prevented, or prohibited, or made more difficult to engage in certain uses that before were more available, more easily or more readily accessible and allowed and permitted?
Yeah. Well, the Forest Service has a camping regulation that it's updating that's going to make, restrict camping both in the Dean Wilderness and outside the Dean Wilderness somewhat. Pull it back further from roads and from watercourses. And there are people really objecting to that, and there are people concerned that the wilderness area will, if you designate additional lands in the wilderness, they won't be able to camp there maybe the way they were camping. I believe that that's a sign of the times of today. The Charles Dean Wilderness is one of the most heavily visited wilderness areas in Region 9. It's the only wilderness area in Indiana. And if you read the Forest Service's biennial monitoring reports, for the last six or eight of them, they're saying we have a problem with overuse of the Dean. And so it's damaging areas like Patton Cave and the Grub Ridge Peninsula, and even some areas down in Copalo now. So there's a need to control overuse. We believe this Wilderness Edition will allow them to spread it out. I own land down there. I don't want to see the Wilderness Edition promote a lot more people coming out to where I am. The Wilderness Edition will surround my land, but I'm willing to compromise the serenity I have of being out there all alone, because I see the unique value this poses to the whole state and the country, to save an adequate wilderness resource so that you can spread out that use. But that requires compromises by me. And likewise, for example, if people are concerned about group size being regulated, because the Forest Service regulates group sizes in wilderness areas, national forest by national forest, and the one in the Dean is, group limit is 10, well, the, yes, you have to make a compromise. So you can't bring a group into one area that exceeds 10. But maybe with, you know, if you've got an IU class, for example, that you want to go out and show folks how to camp without leaving too large of a footprint, then maybe you should reduce the camp, the group size, to 10 or less and get multiple permits where you would have had to get only one before. And let's remember also that this bill is, it's not just setting aside additional acres of land for the wilderness, many of which the Forest Service has said are old-growth forests, in the Nebo Ridge-Browning Mountain area, for example. It's setting aside twice as many acres outside that Wilderness Edition as a national recreation area, where group sizes, there is no limit on them at 10, including many, many more acres along Monroe Reservoir. So, you know, there should be room for different uses to continue. And this bill actually was written to do that. It has six, or it has 11 non-wilderness corridors that go through the wilderness to allow for all mountain biking trails that are currently in use there to continue. It has several roads that are still being used. They've made non-wilderness corridors around them, and any county easements are all off limits to the wilderness boundary is 100 foot setback from those easements. So those are the kinds of things that Senator Braun's staff has written into the bill that I think, you know, address concerns about competing uses and resources, but yet still set aside, you know, the largest track of wild forest land, you know, in the lower Midwest in the process for posterity for the public's benefit.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Osare, did you have a question? Nope. Any other questions? Councilmember Stossberg?
Yeah, I have another question that I think is also for Mr. Stanton. Mr. Lucas, if you could maybe put the map up there again that has the purple and the green and the brown. I'm just wondering what the reasoning was behind which spaces were going to be national recreation areas and which spaces were going to be the wilderness areas, because it's really patchy. And I'm kind of looking at it going, well, why is that little bit of purple over there by Axum Ridge, for example, when, like, all the rest of it is green? Because there's not a plan right now for management of the national recreation area. So I'm just kind of wondering why, and maybe, I'm hoping that you know, why some of those choices were made about the splits between where the recreation area would be and where the wilderness area would be.
The lands that are called old-growth forests, as I've said, they're either prescriptionary 6.2 in the current management plan, or prescriptionary 6.4, or prescriptionary 2.4. And all of those three prescription areas set aside the forests from commercial logging or road building into the interior. And they are there to preserve kind of biodiversity of intact interior forest tracks. The lands further to the east and south, and then over there west of the Dean Wilderness that are in, they're national forest lands, too. If it's white, it's private land, so we can't, we can't touch that. Or if it's that gold land, it's Army Corps land. We didn't want to touch that because they need that for management of the reservoir. So those purple lands are lands that either drain into the Little Fork of Salt Creek, the South Fork of Salt Creek, the North Fork, or the Middle Fork, or right into the reservoir, and they could affect the water supply of the reservoir. Or in the case of the land that's due south of Copalo, the southern part of the existing Dean Wilderness, area that we call Hunter Creek, that's draining down to the Salt Fork drainage south of the dam, that is part of the most heavily-used horseback riding area in the national forest. And so we wanted to maintain, and that supports several active horse camp businesses there, and a public horse, two public horse camps. So we wanted to maintain the recreational value of that land going immediately to the south of, you see there, it says Hunter Creek, trailhead, that area in there, and promote the recreational value of it.
Okay. You have a question? Thank you. Thank you. Other questions on this resolution? Other questions on this resolution?
I guess I will ask one. This, if it passes the Senate, it needs to go to the House? Is that how it works?
Yeah. It has to go to the House and.
What are the chances there?
The House is, is, shows great deference to the congressperson whose district the, any proposed wilderness area is located in, in moving legislation. That's why we couldn't get the Nebo Ridge Wilderness established way back in the 70s and 80s because Lee Hamilton opposed it because of the concern that private landowners raised. So we couldn't move it to the House. Erin Howchin is the Congresswoman who represents the area now. We're asking her to introduce the bill in the House. Mike Braun is, is working with her on that. There is also a discussion about putting the bill into the farm bill in the Senate and then in the House, which would expedite its movement. But either way, we've gotta have Erin Howchin's blessing. So that's, she's our primary public official we're trying to appeal to right now. And we'd urge the City of Bloomington and the City Council, the mayor's office, to, to weigh in directly with her about the impact this will have on, on your community and quality of life. She's, she's pivotal in this thing moving through the Congress.
And has your organization engaged with her office?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
She has a legislative director, Jonathan Van Buren. I encourage you to, to get his email. We have it in our materials. I can't think of it offhand, but talk to him directly. He's, he's handling a lot of the correspondence and the forward movement for her.
Well, if there are no other questions from council members at this time, let's go to the public. If any of the member of the public would like to comment on this resolution, you can come up to the podium and make sure to sign in with your name, and you'll have up to five minutes. And Mr. Lucas, could you make the announcement for any Zoom participants, please?
Yes, if there are folks on Zoom that would like to speak to this resolution, please let us know by raising your hand in Zoom or sending a chat to the meeting host.
Okay, sir, you can go ahead and state your name and.
My name is Tyler Kivlin. I'm the Skill Development Coordinator at IU Outdoor Adventures. I also hold a degree in outdoor resource management and outdoor recreation from IU. I stand before you pretty conflicted over this whole thing, to be honest. So studying outdoor recreation and resource management, you would probably guess that I'm pretty supportive of all of this. And we're, we're also pretty concerned as a program because of the group limit that was mentioned. So we have, in an annual year, we take several academic courses. In fact, my face is still chapped from taking a class out to Nebo Ridge this last weekend and teaching them the joys of weather. We take a lot of classes out, backpacking, outdoor leadership, canoeing, kayaking, and the areas that are on this map are almost entirely covering what I would call our primary classroom. So again, I'm very supportive of the wilderness expansion and even the, you know, recreation However, we've struggled quite a bit, we've struggled quite a bit at gaining access to the Dean. In fact, we don't have access to the Dean Wilderness. We were able to, in the last couple of years, finally get a special use permit approved by the Forest Service. And then recently, they even deemed our impact, quote, having a nominal effect to the point where we didn't even need to apply for a permit anymore. However, if this is expanded, that's going to hurt our, our case. So my job, I know my colleagues here and some of my former students are here to speak a little bit more on our program, but specific to the group limit, most of our courses operate within a 13 to 16 group size. We take great pride in the leave no trace principles and teach those quite a bit. And the fact that nobody even knew we existed when a lot of this was proposed is, to a degree, somewhat of a compliment to our impact. Our, our training structure, we send typically three to four student trip leaders out into the field for these trips. It takes a long time to get to some of these trip leaders to a point where their competency reaches what we consider the acceptable risk, we'll call it. To do that, we have to send about three or four because then the mentorship process takes hold and it's able to work. For us to work under a 10-person group size limit would require us to narrow that down to two, maybe three trip leaders, which is pretty tough when it comes to risk management and learning. So, so that is personally my biggest concern is the group limit factor. When we go out, we are practicing the leave no trace principles. We travel on trail when we can, though I will say that the backcountry travel that would also be restricted is a huge part of, say, our search and rescue courses, our map and compass courses. To do those on trail very much threatens the integrity of that course and what we're actually trying to teach. So again, I will let my students and colleagues follow up on some of that. But what we're essentially asking is for a little bit more time. We have been able to speak with a representative from Senator Braun's office, though we have not heard anything really back from them. We certainly have not seen anything in writing. We would love to arrange for a special use permit so that we can continue teaching our students the exact, the exact thing that we are here fighting for as well, right? We are actually teaching them to write these types of bills and support these types of endeavors. However, the catch 22 in this situation is that this would actually hinder our ability to do that effectively and safely. So thank, thank you for your time. I'll let my colleagues and students add more to that.
Hello, I'm Irene Georgiades. I'm a former student and current adjunct instructor for the program. And I've definitely identify as a public enjoyer of the land, so here to speak on that as well. Yeah, I am here to temper a little bit of the enthusiasm about doubling the green. While we're all here in support of the bill and of designating wilderness areas, something to consider is, just like Tyler said, getting things in writing and allowing people who are public recreators in the space and who are spreading enjoyment of public recreation, time and access to land. I went through the IU Outdoor Adventure Program. I took an IU outdoor leadership class eight years ago, and I've been working in the outdoor industry and for the program ever since. And this has caught a lot of my colleagues and my friends kind of on their heels while it seems like it's been in the works for quite a while, and this meeting has shed some light on why it needs to be a sort of more urgent and rush-through problem. I, I'm just trying to urge some quick response, not only to the bill and trying to get it pushed through, but to the community members so that this bill can, you know, best represent everyone who's involved in using the land. We take students out all the time, and they have never even considered that Bloomington has this sort of land or that it needs protecting. It's people who have never camped outdoors, maybe didn't read the course description quite as studiously as they should've and haven't realized that they might be camping. And through those overnight experiences with their peers, with other student leaders, they grow a lifelong appreciation. I get emails from students to this day who don't always tell me which class they took, but are asking for maps to take their friends outside and who now know how to do so with respect for the land and protecting it. And, yeah, these students and the other outdoor recreators just haven't had a lot of time to respond, so I'm encouraging that response. And, yeah, I think it's really important to consider that the next generation of people who want to be protecting this land and this space are people who might be sitting in these states' seats and seats higher up where the bill might be seen. And that pushing something through without consideration of a lot of different people who use the land is just not what we're advocating for. So I think that's all I have to say. I know we have a couple other people from this organization to speak as well, so I'll come anytime there, but thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
My name is Liam Hobson. I'm a researcher in the neuroscience department, but former human biology student at IU. The cool thing about this now is everyone's in agreement that this is really important to do. But I think the main thing that we're, as IU Outdoor Adventures, either current employees or past employees, is that we need to consider what IU Outdoor Adventures does as a program is, we teach people how to care about and think about how they walk around and exist in outdoor spaces. Because the thing that we see is like, yeah, people go into the wilderness, but without, maybe without proper education in the principles of leave no trace, they're seven. They can go through all the hand signals for them. But that's something that we teach. And we can do that in the classroom, and we do do that in the classroom, but we also teach that in outdoor settings. And so having a space where we can do that reliably and consistently is really powerful for how the students then go out existing in those outdoor spaces because it creates a knowledge base that they can draw from so that they can leave less of an impact. So, yeah. And honestly, in the presentations earlier, I didn't know the significance of reducing, how this would reduce the logging, which would reduce erosion and then improve water quality. That's awesome. And, yeah, I think we can all agree that that's super, super important. But I think the extra consideration is, how do people use the spaces? And that's something that IU Outdoor Adventures does a really good job instructing. So, yeah, that's just my main concern. Originally, when I heard about this, I was super excited. But considering how it affects the program, I think is really important consideration because IU Outdoor Adventures ended up being the reason I came to IU and decided a lot of things for my future. So, yeah, this is a great program, and I'd hate to see it be negatively impacted for myriad of reasons by rushing through this without a special consideration, special consideration, so.
Yes, please be sure to sign in.
Hello, my name is Nikki Brown. I am the Academic Coordinator at IU Outdoor Adventures. I have a lot of the same sentiments to share with my colleagues that have already spoken. However, I'm gonna speak to something I was probably told not to speak of tonight, which was the heart of this program, and that is because I tend to cry. And I'm gonna try to keep my composure. So I also was a graduate from IU. I was in outdoor rec and resource management. I worked for the Forest Service. I worked in wilderness areas. I've spent my entire career in the outdoors. When I was an undergraduate, this program made the biggest impact on me that anything has ever impacted since. It dictated the entire course of my life. So I've been outdoors since then, and I have been part of Outdoor Adventures as an adjunct since 2013. So I've been around for quite some time. I oversee the academic classes, which means all of our classes that go out into the field, we ask students to write a reflection paper. I see those reflection papers. I see hundreds of these reflection papers. And it is very evident that our program makes such a huge impact on our students. Their health and well-being, I don't know if any of you are parents, I have a 20-year-old daughter, we work with students on a daily basis that are going through a lot of anxiety, all kinds of different mental health. Things are very prevalent. And for the first time, these students go outside, they unplug, they, they have an experience that, that seems to just lessen their anxiety. It lessens everything. The, the papers I read are so impactful that I just, I have such a strong belief in what we do. And it really does make me kind of nauseous to think that this could be taken away because of wilderness designation. We, I don't think anyone here disagrees that we, we wanna protect the forest. I think that there may be a solution that we can keep these lands protected. That's not a debate. The group sizes that I know you guys are concerned about are, are actually not that big. Like Tyler mentioned, 13 went out last weekend, 13 are going out this weekend, 14 went out a few weekends ago. We also camp, if you think about this too, we camp during the academic school year. So we're actually not out there during the times that the majority of the public are in these spaces. We camp in the dead of winter. We have very little impact on, on the land. We make a point of having very little impact. We teach advocacy, leave no trace. We are, we are the biggest voices of actually teaching the future to protect exactly what we're talking about here. The demographic of the people that are here right now, I mean, I'm kind of included in that, are, are on the older side. We need young people to get excited to go outside. And most of them are on their phones, they don't go outside at all, and that's what we do. We, we get them outdoors, we introduce them to what we have. If this bill is passed and we are not able to go into the wilderness, the proposed Dean area, and I also have some questions about the recreation area as well, they, they won't even know it's in their backyard. We're gonna be forced to go either out of Bloomington, well, we will be forced to go out of Bloomington, potentially out of the state. It, it just does a really big disservice to the students who are right here, who won't even know that they can go hike or paddle just down the street and relieve a ton of stress. And the well-being piece of this is just huge. My other concerns have to do with the national recreation area. I know it was just mentioned that there, there's no restrictions on group size. I've never known that to be true. I always was under the impression that a national recreation area also had size restriction, also had restrictions as to where you can camp. I keep hearing rumors like, oh, you guys will be fine, but I have yet to see that in writing. I don't believe that we're gonna be fine just because that's been floated around. So I have a lot of concerns, obviously, the pace at which this is moving. I, I understand to some degree, but I also feel like this is a pace in order to stop some of these other voices from coming forward and saying, wait, wait, wait. We've been established for 20-plus years in this environment, and clearly the Forest Service doesn't think we have an impact big enough to, to force us to get a permit. Like, we're very nominal. And as Tyler spoke, the fact that nobody even knows we exist also speaks to that. We take upwards of 400 students in an academic year in there and about 600 credit hours. So it's substantial through the school of public health, and it would be impacted. I don't think they'd be super happy about it either. But anyway, I don't know what else to say, but thank you for listening. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Council. Bear with me, public speaking is on my forte. I always want to take a little bit of your time to reiterate what my peers have said.
Could you please state your name?
Yeah, sorry. Austin Crouch. Well, my peers have said today, I, biggest thing I wanna hit on is that we are allies of the Forest Alliance and allies of the Friends of Lake Monroe. We do nothing but teach preservation of the land, anything from land acknowledgement that you mentioned so today, to future stewardship of the natural sectors that we were talking about. Like Nikki mentioned, 400 kids a school year, not just local Hoosier kids, but also international students come and enjoy this local area that we have. It's truly a jewel in the state. I'm from Muncie, Indiana, and I promise you that there is nothing like it anywhere else in the state. I encourage you guys to take your time to, to think about this, to hear us, because you not only, you, you don't handicap our ability to show students and others what we have in our backyard, you completely demolish any ability that we have of it. I don't think that it would be a hard ask to continue education. I think that's me, very needed, especially in the world that we live in today, and especially for stewardship responsibly in the future. I would like to see that conversation happen a little bit better. I, I think that it is being rushed, and I think that there are reasons for that, but I think we need to pause and reflect on what we're going to lose, right? I'm biased because I believe in the program that we have and the, and the results that we've seen come from the students that have passed through our doors. So that being said, that's all I have, but I appreciate your time. I appreciate you hearing us out, and I hope that you'll take this in consideration, also to the other two groups here as well. So we're allies and we're not enemies. We can work together to, to build a better future for the Hoosier and Southern Indiana. So thank you.
Hello, my name is Douglas Rapp. I'm the president of the New I'm the president of a new 501(c)(3) called Coalition in the State of Indiana. First, I'd like to mention that this has been in the works for four years, the conversations with Senator Braun's staff to draft this legislation. I want to explain to you a little bit about Coalition. We are a group of groups, outdoor recreationists, conservationists, hunters, fishers, that represent tens of thousands of Indiana residents, all who have come together in a positive discourse to create this legislation, all who have had interaction with Senator Braun's staff, have been part of promoting this for the last four years. And we represent mountain bikers, Indiana Mountain Biking Association is one of our members, Indiana Overlanders, which have nothing to gain from this bill, since there's no ROV trails included in it, who are also supportive of all of these outdoor recreation groups that are not just central to Indiana, but recognize the significance of what we have an opportunity to build. This is not new. And I hear my colleagues down there, I wish that you could have accepted our invitation to speak when IFA was going to speak to you, to educate you on 2990. So this isn't anything new. It's not been rushed, it's been in the works for 50 years. So the legislation's been being drafted for the last four years. So we welcome your group to Coalition, to join in that positive conversation, constructive conversation, have your views represented. What I'll say is, is that the Forest Service will still manage this area, so the rules won't change. So group sizes, access, those things won't change, other than the designation for the areas, they'll be more restrictive in the expanded wilderness. But the group sizes won't change, the processes won't change, so if you have an exception, you can apply for an exception again. The other thing I'll say is, this legislation creates a board that is unprecedented of representatives all across the recreational community and conservation communities. So if you read the legislation, there's a board in there that you can participate in, where you, as a citizen or representative of your organization, can have a say in how that land is managed. This is direct, it's direct input to how that land is managed in those issues that you talk about. So I would just like to reiterate, this isn't rushed, it's been in the works for four years. It has considered everybody's opinion that has come to the table. Senator Braun's staff has never turned away anybody, whether they're for it or against it. So I encourage you to act now. This is the most important piece of conservation legislation in the last 50 years in this state. Thank you.
Hey, folks. My name's Neil, and I am a staff member of the Indiana Forest Alliance.
Could you give us your full name?
Yeah, Neil Gasswami. And I'm a staff member of the Indiana Forest Alliance, Sierra Club Executive Member and Political Committee Chair, and an active member of the Monroe County Environmental Commission. Back in April of 2022, President Biden signed an executive order entitled, "Executive Order on Strengthening the Nation's Forests, Communities, and Local Economies." In that executive order, how much time do we got? In that executive order, he called for the protection of old-growth forests. I quote, "Strengthening America's forests, which are home to cherished expanses of mature and old-growth forests on federal lands, is critical to the health, prosperity, and resilience of our communities. Globally, forests represent some of the most biodiverse parts of our planet and play an irreplaceable role in reaching net-zero greenhouse gas emissions. Terrestrial carbon sinks absorb around 30% of the carbon dioxide emitted by human activities last year. Here at home, America's forests absorb more than 10% of annual United States economy-wide greenhouse gas emissions. Conserving old-growth and mature forests on federal lands is critical to protecting these and other ecosystem services provided by these forests." End quote. As a young person, we are reminded often about the fact that we are in a climate crisis, and that we have to take the proper steps to protect our areas that need protecting. We at the Indiana Forest Alliance were successful in engaging with this important environmental duty by getting a bill authored and introduced to expand the wilderness here in our backyard, namely, the Charles C. Dean Wilderness, and establish the Management Harrison National Recreation Area that will protect the quality of our water, the water that you drink every day into perpetuity. This is, this is something, this is, this is, this is something that we are not going to have the opportunity to have again, right? And I'd like to just, I guess, you know, I think, I think it's important that, I agree, like, I admire the fact that you guys love camping, I really do. But I question how you can claim that you are stewards of the land if you are not concerned about protecting our water and our wilderness. And I don't want to mischaracterize what you're saying either, but the thing is, is there are thousands of acres, thousands of other acres that you can go to. You could lessen your size by just a few people. And I think that that is worth it, to protect our water quality and to have this pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name's Max Wolf. I'm a fourth-year student at IU. I'm a transfer student, so this is my second spring. I've been down here since the fall of 2023. And in that time, I have enjoyed the various forests that Monroe County has to offer. They're very beautiful. I enjoy going on hikes and stuff like that. I want to talk about a few things. Firstly, I want to relate this issue back to Palestine because, for one, the ecological impact that the genocide in Gaza and Palestine has on the planet is not dissimilar to the effects of long, long-time logging in this country, or various other, various other activities that have contributed to the climate crisis. So I want you guys to consider the relationship between those two things. Secondly, I want to say that when, when considering this bill, when, I don't know the ins and outs, I wasn't planning on speaking today, but when considering this bill, the primary focus, your responsibility, I feel, is to look at the ecological impact, that, the impact on the climate. Definitely not, it should not be to consider what some program at IU has, because IU is not, is not for the land here in Bloomington. IU is not, does not represent the people of Bloomington. IU, in my opinion, takes away from Bloomington, and the students that come here, they come in and they come out, and then what happens after that? It's not their concern. So I don't think it should be your concern, what some program at IU has to say about this bill, and that your concern should be about the people of Bloomington and their ability to enjoy these spaces, and the protection of the drinking water, and their ability to live safely and happily here. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, do we have anybody on Zoom who would like to comment?
No, not that I see.
Okay, anybody else in council chambers? All right, well, let's come back to council members for any follow-up questions you may Councilmember Rallo?
I'm going to defer to Councilmember Azari.
Okay, Councilmember Azari.
Thank you. And I'll address my question to the president in hopes for clarification, because I don't know how to appropriately do this. I wanted to ask a question to the members of the public, but only because I didn't quite understand what the suggested amendments or changes to the resolution were, and I don't know what the appropriate way of getting that information is, particularly those who spoke ambiguously about their support of the, of the resolution that's on the table.
So is there a particular speaker you would like to address?
Someone's volunteering, I mean, I wouldn't, and it's, is that allowed? It's, it's...
Well, it's unusual, but Mr. Kilvan, if you would like to come back to the microphone? And then Councilmember Azari, if you can phrase your question a little more specifically, because I did not understand it.
Just a, just a very brief question. What would you suggest that we do in terms of, we have a resolution in front of us, which is calling for the support of a, of legislation at the Senate, US Senate? Do you think that there needs to be changes to that, or are you suggesting that we don't approve that?
I'm suggesting, or we are suggesting, that there's changes to include a special-use permit so we can continue educating students of the importance of this exact thing. So to be clear, we're supportive of this.
That's where I was confused.
We are supportive of this, so much in fact that we want to continue being able to educate students about it in the way that we have.
Thank you. Thank you so much. That was my question. And then, Madam President, may I ask a question to, to our colleague who gave a useful presentation? I now have a follow-up for him that I did not have until they spoke.
Yes, you mean Mr. Stand?
Yes, please, Mr. Stand. Your reaction to that, I mean, is it, because we've heard that there is no restriction on people entering, that nothing's going to change, is their objection reasonable in your views?
My view would be that the, there's almost 30,000 acres of National Recreation Area that the bill will designate that is to promote recreation in the area, and for which there is no regulation in the country that is limiting group size that I'm aware of in, on that kind of land. But the plan that's developed may ultimately end up doing that, just as the Forest Service has decided in the DEEM to limit group size to 10. It varies from wilderness area to wilderness area, there's not a uniform group size that's being done. So my, my view would be to support the expansion of the wilderness and to get folks involved in the plan for the National Recreation Area so that their, their voices are heard, and also in commenting on the Forest Service's camping regulations, to say that we want special-use permits to be given out to allow for IU to continue, to have larger group sizes instead of 10, have 12 in the DEEM wilderness. But I think we have to be, our view is that the wilderness resource is the objective that Bloomington has to protect here. And right now, you have the federal government trying to convince the Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals to overturn Judge Pratt's decision so that they can proceed forward to start logging and burning immediately at Houston South. And our organizations have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars. We haven't had any help from any IU groups, not a penny. We've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars trying to keep that from happening. And we're, you know, you can't win with NEPA, it's a process law. Mr. Ruff knows all about that from I-69. Eventually, they get their way if they persist, all right? And the Seventh Circuit is horrible on case law there. So we'll lose eventually, and we're teetering. And this bill is our best hope for forcing them to go back and start over at Houston South. They've proposed a draft supplemental environmental assessment there that proposes to do the exact same thing. In fact, those cuts I showed you are the cuts proposed in that assessment. So we're on the verge of losing the whole thing. They want to slow down, but we can't, we can't afford to. If Braun leaves office and this bill doesn't go anywhere, we're done next year on this, and we lose the Houston South fight, and more than one-fourth of the whole area that is intact, older and old-growth forests gets savagely cut into in those cuts that I was just pointing out to. My view is work in the planning process to get special-use permits. IFA would be willing to go with the IU Outdoor Rec people to lobby for that, but, but don't change this bill to put a loophole in that says we want a special-use permit for a university here, because then we're going to have every national wilderness group in the country going, wait a minute, we don't want wilderness bills that are going to allow every university that's nearby to start putting more group sizes in than, than the local Forest Service thinks is advisable in their plan for the wilderness area. And again, this will not stop IU Outdoor Rec from using the wilderness. They can't use it with large group sizes or the sizes they want, but they can still use that, and they've got a recreation area outside of it that includes thousands of additional acres along Monroe Reservoir that allows them to use it at those larger group sizes. So that's, I would say, I would say, don't amend this, please pass this, but encourage us to work with the Forest Service to get them to bend a little more in this case, to allow IU Outdoor Rec to do what they're doing. Okay.
Any other follow-up questions from council members? Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, this is for Dr. Mitchell Berger. Your organization is about eight years old, I think, and you've identified, you've done a watershed analysis for Lake Monroe. My understanding is there are a number of small farms, dozens of small farms, two large farms that have a nutrient flow into the lake that are concerning. But the Houston South project, is it my understanding that that is the most, that endangers our, our water source more than anything? Is this something that is, I mean, I'm thinking of the scale of this.
I think the scale is what's important, you know, these thousands of acres. I couldn't do that comparison, I think, without going back and doing some analysis. And it's always difficult to calculate, you know, how much one individual action is affecting the water quality. The whole nature of non-point source pollution is it's not something that you can point at. It's not one big thing, it's everything, all of the things that are happening in the watershed coming together. And I would say, just the magnitude, the number of acres, that this management of this land has more potential to impact water quality, both good and bad, than any other managed land in the watershed.
So our duty at the council and other bodies in the county is to safeguard this water supply for perpetuity, for posterity. And I know that the major threats are nutrient load and siltation, but I'm assuming that there's a synergistic effect, that if you have clearcutting, you not only have siltation, but you have more nutrients going in.
Yeah, approximately 50% of the nutrients that come into the lake are sediment-bound. So, you know, we've already got that scenario where we're bringing nutrients in with sediment. Sediment settles down into the bottom of the lake, and then when the chemistry of the lake changes over the seasons, those nutrients get released and promote algal blooms. Yeah, so, you know, in the case of, you know, sediments that are being released from logging operations, and also the ash and so forth that's being released and the runoff from burns, you know, that's, that's all nutrients that are going into the lake.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. It's very helpful.
Any other follow-up questions from council members? All right, seeing none, we'll move to council comment and debate. Are there any comments from council members before we move on to a vote? Councilmember Zulik?
I just think that we should be doing everything that we can to protect our wildlife and our nature preserves. As we have seen recently, even in Monroe County, there's been a significant amount of cutting down trees. If anyone noticed, February was kind of the hottest February that we've ever had on record. Daily statistics, every time I open up my computer, it's new record for this day in history. So for me, it just, it doesn't make sense, even according to Bloomington City's values, to not pass this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
Just a couple of brief things. One is, when I was thinking about this over the last few days, I was thinking about the biodiversity crisis and how we have to play our part, and... biodiversity crisis and how we have to play our part, and it's important to protect old growth. The cerulean warblers is a familiar story, because they fly all the way from Peru to nest in Indiana. And I think at last count, there were just a few hundred mating pairs, and they've been on a steep slope decline for decades. I think, like, losing 75% of their numbers in just the last 40 years, as have a lot of neotropical migrant birds. And so it seems imperative that we need to act to preserve their habitat, as well as timber rattlers, although they're not the most cuddly things, as cerulean warblers are. The other aspect, of course, is the old growth itself, just thinking about cutting down a tree that's 160 or 70 years old, I mean, we're talking about, it's not going to be replaced until the 23rd century. I think that's a call for action. And I know there are multiple concerns about this and trade-offs that occur in any kind of legislation, and so I'm not without concern for groups of people who want to enjoy it and educate people in the outdoors, and that's really important. It seems that there is an opportunity here for some flexibility in terms of special use permit. It sounds like you've got advocates that would work for you. I would be happy to write a letter to Senator Braun and have council members sign it to that effect, that, because it sounds like part of his consideration is for the use of the outdoors, and that's what inspired him to protect this. So, and then lastly, it's such a rare opportunity, it doesn't happen very often. I mean, this was set to be expanded in 1982, didn't happen. There was pushback. Now's our chance to make that, 42 years later, we have another opportunity, and I think we should seize it. So I hope the, my colleagues will support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to vote in favor of the resolution tonight as well. I am, while not a sponsor of the resolution, I had done some of the initial work along with my colleagues and working with IFA to move this forward, including just diligencing the resolution, its impacts with city Bloomington utilities, park staff, others, and more recently, IU Outdoor Adventures, who I know are feeling like this is moving quickly for their tastes, and have some concerns about it. You know, I think they're fair, I'm sympathetic to their concerns, I'm very hopeful that a resolution can be found that accommodates their needs and/or that the adjustments they need to make are minimally impactful on their work and their important educational efforts. I find it compelling, the comments that were shared about all they do. But that said, like my colleague, Councilmember Rallo, noted, I think this is important on balance to support. It's an important opportunity to continue to expand conservation in our area and has positive impacts for Bloomington and the surrounding region. So I really appreciate all the folks that came out and shared their views tonight and all the hard work of the IFA in particular, with their years of advocacy for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ruff?
Yeah, I want to thank Mr. Stanton and Mr. Booker for coming out and sharing their knowledge and experience. It was super valuable, both of you, super valuable for the discussion. I also want to thank everyone affiliated with IU Outdoor Recreation for coming out and expressing their concerns and their perspective. I know you're passionate and sincere about both the desire and the recognition of the wonderful opportunity to preserve more area and protect it better, but at the same time, your passion for running the programs and influencing young people to value and appreciate the very thing we're trying to do here, and that that must feel tough in your gut, that there's some, feels like there might be some kind of dilemma here that pulls both ways. But I really think, I have confidence that whatever needs in terms of maybe special permits or to accommodate slightly larger groups that would work for IU Outdoor Recreation, that we can work together on that. I pledge, I'm sure along with all my fellow council members, I would pledge to, you know, advocate, write letters, do whatever we can do, the same way we're sort of, we're advocating for this bill, to advocate for outdoor recreation programs, because I'm an academic advisor at IU, and I see a lot of my advisees, my students do the programs and have great experiences, life-changing experiences, a lot of them things that they've never done before, never dreamed of doing before, that they, that they're exposed to, and it changes their lives. So, thanks for being here. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Azari?
Thank you, and thank you to the members of the public who've taken the significant amounts of time to be here tonight. I think, to me, it boils down to the fact that, you know, if we lose our access to our quality of water from Monroe Lake, that this city ceases to exist. And I think that if you're comparing, you know, the viability of an IU program to like the viability of, you know, there's sort of false equivalencies, right? So, but, you know, I echo what, what all of my fellow members have said, and that I think we, in supporting this resolution, also stand to support, I think, the very clear need for figuring out a way to make sure that you all can continue to use the space in ways that support your programs.
Other council members wishing to comment? Anybody? Councilmember Stossberg?
It's getting very late, but I just, I can't not say this, I suppose, that our family has really enjoyed this area over the years, and it kind of culminated in 2020 when we were all really, really tired of staying inside. And we, as a family, hiked 100 miles that summer, including the 40-ish Mile Nobstone Trail. And when I say my family, I had a nine-year-old and a 12-year-old with me at the time. So it was really an adventure, and it was really fun, and I'm delighted to support greater protections in this area so that 50 years from now, some parent can go out there with their kids and do some low-impact camping. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'll just make a few comments. I wanted to thank the Indiana Forest Alliance for all their advocacy and their many years of work and inventorying all of the wonderful diversity of flora and fauna in this area, and in particular, Jeff Stanton for his leadership. And also, thank you to Dr. Mitchell Booker for being here and sharing her expertise. I have a feeling that we're going to pass this resolution. I hope that the Senate bill passes through the Senate very soon. I would encourage everybody who is in favor of this wilderness area to contact Representative Erin Houchen, to encourage her to support this in the House of Representatives. And I never thought I would actually support an NRA or anything with the initials NRA, but I will support the Benjamin Harrison National Recreation Area this evening with pride. Thank you.
I think we can call the question. Clerk Bolden, if you're ready?
Yes, Councilmember Azari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Pete Mountsmith?
Yes.
And Stossberg?
Yes.
And that passes 8-0. All right, now we will move to additional public comment. We don't have anything for first reading, so we will move to additional public comment. Is there anybody in the public who would like to comment on something that is not on the agenda? Yes, please come to the podium and state your name. Mr. Lucas, can you do the call-out to people on Zoom?
Yes, if there are any members of the public on Zoom that would like to speak, please let us know by raising your hand or sending a chat to the meeting host.
My name is Michael Martin. I am a professor of cinema studies at, in the Media School at IU. I have a very brief statement I would like to make. Our conception of community is certainly more than a group of people who inhabit a shared space, resources, services, and what may befall us locally and in-state. The community that is Bloomington is concerned too about world affairs, the growing climate crisis, migrants, refugees on our borders, the war in Ukraine, and nationally reproductive rights and the censorship of books in ever more schools and libraries that challenge accepted notions of morality, race, sexuality, and indeed, the historical record itself. Our community possesses a soul and moral conscience, and affairs global as well, doesn't have to agree on all matters of war and peace, but is aware and engaged with the world beyond the normal bounds of residence. While the International Court of Justice deliberates the claims of each side in the Gaza War, I urge the Bloomington City Council to call for an immediate ceasefire in recognition of the devastation of Gaza and death of 29,000-plus of its civilian population occasioned by this war. Such an atrocity must not be countenanced by our silence. As a teacher in our community, I engage daily with youth who are alarmed and question this and other conflicts abroad. Our responsibility as a community is to register through you, the city council, our concern for the people of Gaza and destruction of their community, as others are doing nationally and worldwide, towns and cities, human rights groups, labor unions, student organizations, professional associations, and increasingly what foreign governments themselves are doing. In the demand for a permanent ceasefire, we extend and affirm the soul and conscience of Bloomington. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor Martin. Next speaker?
Hi, I'm Luke Summers. I'm a lifelong resident of Bloomington, Indiana. I want to sincerely encourage you all to call for a permanent and immediate ceasefire in Gaza right now, but I also want to remind you that this is a first step, and it's a first step that's four months too late. Over 30,000 civilians have died in Gaza, and right now, calling for a ceasefire is the bare minimum. After this, I would like to strongly encourage you to have Bloomington implement the BDS Boycott-Divest Sanction Policy against Israel, to divest from weapons manufacturing, to divest from apartheid, and to divest from genocide. Thank you.
Anybody else want to make a public comment on items not on the agenda? Mr. Lucas, do we have anybody on Zoom?
I do have a rapid comment from Sam Dove. Quickly.
Okay.
Mr. Dove says that New Hope for Families is holding a volunteer orientation session for new and interested volunteers on March 7th from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. in their administrative offices at 1140 South Morton Street in Bloomington. Volunteer candidates will receive a tour of the facility, meet some of the staff, and hear about each of their programs, along with current volunteer opportunities. New Hope for Families is a community leader in providing services for families in crisis. They administer an emergency shelter program, equipping families to progress into stable housing, and offer an excellent early learning program. Learn more and register today by going to the Bloomington Volunteer Network website. And I believe that is the only comment through Zoom.
All right, thank you. So we will next move on to matters of the council's schedule. Of course, we have a regular session scheduled for next Wednesday, March 6. Mr. Lucas, is there anything else to mention?
Just a note that the Jack Hopkins Committee will meet for the first time tomorrow and hold an organizational meeting, so that process is kicking off. So for the folks on that committee, we'll see you tomorrow.
Okay, very good. And I believe for next Wednesday, we do expect to have some legislation. Is that correct?
We expect at least one resolution, and then at least one ordinance for a first reading for next week, so.
Okay, very good. All right, if there's nothing else, then we can go ahead and adjourn.